Call the water. The City of McDonough, City Council Workshop for June 5th, 2014 at 5:30 PM. Will our city clerk please tell us whether or not the meeting has been properly advertised?
Mayor Proton, the full schedule for our meetings were published in the December 31st, 2013 slash January 1st, 2014 edition of the Henry Daily Herald Newspaper. The agenda for tonight was posted on the first floor of City Hall on Friday, May 30th, and it was posted on the website Monday, June 2nd. Yes, the meeting has been properly called and the requirements met.
Thank you. Ms. Spencer, would you leave the pledge to the flag and the invitation, please? Would, Ms. Stewart?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me pray. We try to go our Father with this pause to say thank you for our goodness and the verses you've given us. And Father, say thank you for an opportunity to serve this great city. And we just Father, say thank you for another beautiful day. And I ask your blessing be upon this meeting tonight. Help us, Lord, to make the right decision. In your precious name, say amen.
Under public comments, do we have anybody signed up other than, like, then Mr. Kilpatrick, I understand, is not here today? Mr. Archer, Mr. Kane, who else is present?
Mr. Lawrence.
Excuse me?
Mr. Lawrence.
Mr. Lawrence?
I'll be there speaking for Danny Kilpatrick.
Right, thank you. And would you prefer to wait and make your comments during the discussion on item, I guess it's 8B, when we take up the Jonesboro Road card? Is that all right permissible with council?
That's fine.
All right. Then that'll be the case then. I'm going, I have some additions to the agenda. Number 13 will remove this item tonight from the agenda. Okay, 13A, approval of the increase of water and sewer rates effective July 1st. We'll add this, 2014, and authorize the mayor to sign the resolution. The 13B, approval of contract between the City of McDonough and the Llewellyn Construction Company in the amount of $535,982.32 and authorization for the mayor to sign the contract.
Mayor Proton?
Yes?
Just one clerical point in that we're removing 13. Should it be 12A and 12B?
12C and 12D. 13 is being removed completely.
That'll be fine. 12A and 12B. Thank you very much. Everybody in agreement? Then moving on, we will...
Let's do a motion.
Okay, I need a motion, I'm sorry.
Motion to approve.
Just a second. Sorry. There's no changes?
We have a motion to approve in a second. All invite. Do you want, would you read back, please? Sure, sorry.
No, I'm fine. The motion is to approve tonight's agenda with the following amendments. To remove item number 13, to add 12A, which is water and sewer rate increase effective July 1, and authorize the mayor to sign the resolution. And then the addition of 12B is the approval of the contract between the City of McDonough and Llewellyn in the amount of $535,982.32, and authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
All those invite over each again.
For one favor, Mayor Proton.
Thank you very much. Item number six is approval of the consent agenda. If you've all had time to review these, do you wish that they be called out, each item? Then I'll accept a motion.
Say.
Have a motion in a second. If you would, please read that back to us.
The motion is to approve the consent agenda for tonight.
Do you have a vote, please? Joe Vance?
For one favor, Mayor Proton.
Thank you. Item number seven, McDonough Hospitality and Tourism. Mr. Lee Freeman, if you'd like to come forward, he's going to make a presentation.
Thank you.
It's good hat.
Thank you.
This looks beautiful.
And also here Cheryl.
I know, sorry. Yes, Cheryl Young, I'm very sorry.
All right.
Okay, thank you. I'll just take now. Mayor Proton, City Council, we thank you all for letting us come in this evening. We're going to update you. This is very similar to last year's report. This is an update for what we've done for 2013 and 14, and what we're planning on doing for the next year. On the first page, we've got our current board members, their positions that they hold, and we've had a few changes from last year. But that's the current board, and Cheryl Young, our numbers came out for a long time. She's our new Director of Tourism, and she's doing a wonderful job. We're happy to have her aboard. On the next page is the basic information about McDonough, the basic tourism information, what we are, who we are, what we do. We're a DMO, 501(c)(6) organization, and we're currently funded with 3.5% of the 8% of the hotel motel tax. And of course, 3% is still the same, that's the City General Fund. The additional 1.5%, that's product development for sticks and bricks projects. And that's, our portion is 3.5% for promoting and advertising. We are regulated by the Georgia Department of Economic Development, and the focus is to promote and bring outside tourists into the City of McDonough. Use our, use all of our hotels, and the motto is heads and beds, feet and streets, and faces and places. This is a list of the items that we can spend money on. This is recommended from the State of Georgia Department of Community Affairs. These are the list of items that are approved expenditures for our dollars. And we operate within side those guidelines. And basically, as you can tell from that list, it's mainly for advertising, billboards, magazines, radios. You know, we can do rent, we pay rent, and general overhead items, no sticks and bricks type items. Examples of what we cannot spend money on, we can't put on a July 4 concert of the fireworks, but we can advertise it. We can't pay for, we can't pay for the fireworks, but we can promote the fireworks. And then there's some other general items that we cannot pay for, like the solar time, generic decorative banners for the streets, general operating expenditures of a chamber of commerce, downtown sidewalk rehab, and decorative items. Those are items, examples of items that tell us that we can't spend money. The purpose of the board, again, it is to promote tourism, attractions, events in downtown using advertisement that's available and what works best to get people from the interstate into our hotels. Our accomplishments for this year, we have secured five new static billboards. We've started a brand new campaign. Later in the slideshow, you'll see the billboards as they come up. But we have, we were very happy and pleased to have gotten those five new static billboards, four coming northbound and one going southbound at the Marrow exit. Hopefully, some of y'all have seen that one. We've got new, four new gateway banners. We're waiting for the brackets to be put up so that we can get those installed. And we've designed the new 2014 visitor guide. And this list goes on, but those top three, especially those billboards, have been a major accomplishment for this year to get those, as they come available. And then this is additional accomplishments. These are different shows, different hotel organizations, and conferences we've attended in order to try to get our name out there, get information in the hands of those people who bring people into cities and different tours in McDonald's. 14 goals, this is really our 14, 15 goals. Continue to have a strong presence in travel and trade shows, generate bus tours into the area, get our mobile-ready website red, up and running efficiently. We're focused on the mobile-ready website, and because of what we've been hearing, that's better than the apps. More people go to the mobile-ready websites than they do the apps. So we're trying to get that one up. And then, of course, as money and time comes available, we will get the app money to the mobile apps. Get us a new design for the interactive downtown map that people can download, use to get around McDonough for ghost tours and the different things that's going on, so that they know what they're doing, you know, know where things are when they come into their area. Continue to work with the new DDA, continue our work with Main Street and the other organizations that we've partnership with. We want to do some improvements at the Welcome Center, and we're partnering with the Main Street program to do that. You know, just since we're doing the rehab, I want to do some other stuff inside of it. And then, of course, we're trying to expand the existing billboards coming from the north towards the south. We're trying to see if we can get some billboards that are affordable in that direction. The City of Atlanta is very expensive. The blue line, you'll see, that's the revenue. The reason we're only showing January, February, and March for the revenues is because the 3% increase started really showing up in the revenue for January, February, and March. And as you can see, there's a significant increased bump in, the trend line stayed the same for that time period, but you'll notice that there is a significant jump in the collections. So the 3% is helping out quite a bit. And then these are examples of our social media. We are keeping ourselves present on Twitter, Facebook, and all the social media areas, and these are examples of the ads and advertisements that we've got going in there. These are our new print ads. We have started a campaign, Eat, Play, Stay, Shop McDonough. And this is the examples of the new literature that's going out on those. We're putting this in magazines, displays, wherever we can get people to set them. Here is our new tour profile guide. Cheryl, on who we put in this?
We use those at the showcase we did in West Virginia.
Okay.
And we also use it for mailroom and things like that.
This is going to be our new visitor guide. This is the one that'll be in welcome centers. We'll have these in all the welcome centers in the state of Georgia and in all the hotels. And again, we're tying in that same branding of what we've gotten exploring with the billboards. Now here are the four new billboards that we put up. The, as you say, it's the Eat McDonough Shop, Play and Stay. The stay, of course, is at the exit with the hotels. But the very top on the Eat McDonough, it starts in Warner Robins. It goes Warner Robins, Bacon, Forsyth, and then McDonough on the billboards. That's the four static billboards coming north. And then we got the one in Marrow coming south that just says Eat McDonough. And again, we're staying with that same and using the webpage to link everybody back to our webpage for the branding, of course. These are the digital billboards that we use locally to advertise with all the different events we partnership, the Main Street movies, USAU, Triple S A baseball tournament, the geranium festival. So this is the digital billboard artwork we're using when something local is happening and we need to get it out on the digital billboards. These will be the four new gateway banners. Again, we're tying those into the billboards, so that people will come to recognize that as they move through the stage. This is an example of, this is a tie from September 30th to June 14th, our website analytics. The reason we use September to June is the presentation we did last year went through September. And as you can see, you know, the geranium drop was one of the big hits for the New Year's Eve. We've had 48,400 page views and 81% of them are new visitors. So we're liking the fact that we're getting a lot of new hits on the website. This is the website itself. When you go to davidover.tourmdonough.com, this is the landing page, and these are just examples. The next few pages are just examples of the website. What's available, the attractions in the area, the area hotels, dining, and that was quick. That was good. Y'all got any questions or comments?
Do you know when that mobile-ready website will be?
It'll be one year from now.
No time limit?
Should be pretty quick. I mean, everything else, you know, we got stuff out there, it's coming up pretty quick.
I do, Lee, I have a couple of questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's great to always get wonderful presentations. My first question had to do with the gateway banners that you mentioned.
Yes, ma'am.
Where will they be located?
They'll be at the city gateways coming in.
Is that all, all of the gateways?
It's four. I think there's five total, but we only have four.
Okay, do you know where those specific locations are? I can get it from you later, Cheryl, but I'm interested in the placement. The other thing, and this is probably maybe a typo, in one area you said that the tourism hosted, the geranium drop? Are we actually on record as being the host for the geranium drop? You know, because the use of that terminology might end up suggesting...
Well, we have raised, we can, as a DMO, we can have fundraisers, and we have had fundraisers in the past. As long as we use that fundraiser money to do the geranium drop, that's what we can do. We don't use the hotel motel tax to do the geranium drop. You know, we have raised money over different events. We partnership with Main Street, we've had the geranium jam, we partner with them on that, raise money. We've raised money at different times this year, and we built up funds to do that. This year, we're going to have to do a car show or something to try to raise money. In other words, we're allowed to go out and have fundraisers.
So these are your unrestricted funds?
These are unrestricted funds, yes.
Okay, all right, cool. Okay, the other thing, and it's just an observation, and I've, you know, said this in other areas as well, it's extremely important to me, that when we're marketing to McDonough, when we're marketing McDonough to outsiders, that we want to make sure that in our print material, that we display diversity. And I do know that there's one picture that has a young man that's playing ball, and he is African-American, but we have such a diverse population, Asian, Latino, African-American, just, we have a diverse population here in McDonough. And I think if we're marketing our city and saying, come to McDonough where you can eat, stay, and play, we want to make sure that people can identify with the marketing materials that we're using, because typically, that's what folks do. They identify with what looks like they want.
Okay, we'll let the marketing control and know that. We'll watch that.
Any other comments?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to item number eight, community development item, rezoning ordinance number Mr. Murray?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Proton. For this moment, we do have a special guest tonight. We have this tan, tan fan, and she's...
Hi, guys.
You can come up to the table, please.
Please, just come join us.
It's nice to see you.
Adam, do you want to talk?
My dad, yes.
This is the first joint venture with Adam and myself, so we're a tiny team on a new investment in your City of McDonough. I'm going to briefly give you some highlights, and I'll turn to Ms. Tang. The area that community development is working with Adam, I'm going to show you first the parent track, and then Adam's going to give you some more information. It's located in the southwest quadrant. This is exit 218. This is your South Point area. And during the research and the information provided to Adam, we do have two other auto dealerships, excuse me, total of three, but we have two that are already existing, your McDonough Toyota, Sun's Honda, and then McDonough Kia, which is under construction. And the information that I'm providing to you tonight, the parent track is to be subdivided. I have spoke to the attorney. We do have a legal description for this area, which constitutes eight acres, and which the dealership. And the information, this is the proposed site layout. So you can see that the building will be closer to I-75 with visibility, and Adam will be talking about some attributes of the building. And then here, then, the focus of the community development is on the street scape. And of course, then, the land use, and which Ms. Tang will be going over shortly, are things that need to occur on the site for a successful outcome. Now you do have in your packet is the custom design for the side, that community development is working with Adam, and would be our client. The other item that will be touched on this evening here shortly is then also the street scape. Currently, right now, we have one, the Sun's Honda, and then your Kia dealership is the street scape that we've used for South Point, which is the decorative column, the decorative fencing, landscaping, and then also to the decorative light fixtures. So this time, I'm going to refer to Adam, and there's additional things he'd like to share, and then with our...
About the lot, I'm not just going to, oh, well, this is a large track. It's split up. The other one between the hotels and the dealership is just right from the next piece of investment. So we'll be looking at possible restaurant uses, maybe another hotel, but this is exciting. I'm glad to have the applicants here, and a significant investment in the city, very visible from their state.
Thank you so much for taking the time to be with us today, or for us here tonight. This is what we are proposing for the building itself. We are keeping the pretty look that Pison has designed and adding, I guess, a little bit of our own sort of frontage, keep in line with the City of McDonough's frontage. So we are going to do some walk, put in a lot of landscaping and lighting, and also come back. And this building's going to be further back in the lot, too, so your frontage will remain fairly well in the scheme of what City of McDonough has established. The back portion facing I-75, which is this, we are hoping to actually be able to use the double frontage for one front to display the cars, but also a portion of it visibly from I-75 to display some cars as well. And like you were saying, this is going to be, I guess we're still working on what this eventually will become, a light fixture. This was the previous proposed light fixture that you guys were considering. And this is just a little bit more of what that frontage, what we're trying to achieve to match up with the rest of the French Toulon Avalon Parkway. We are very, very excited between this area, and hopefully, we'll work with you guys to find like that happy balance between to make our dealership look as whatever you guys have in mind.
And real quick, while we're here tonight, and there are additional questions, four saying. When, I briefed Adam on, when he was marketing the site, the initial conditions on the property require the structure shall be residential in appearance with pitch roofs and architectural features which provide connectivity to your other Avalon properties. And remember, at that time, we were thinking, and it was proposed, this was going to be a master retail development. Of course, as we've seen, and now with the improvement of Adam aboard with your team of professionals, we now have a different use presence. And remember also, too, we're now going to proceed forth with coming months on an overlay, so that will allow us to transition from zoning properties with conditions to having development standards. So in doing that, with this condition, you can also, structure shall be constructed in four sides brick and/or stone and/or flats. So that would provide a significant challenge on the request by the client. So what we're doing there is we're changing, modifying that condition for the eight acres, and then also, too, some of the site layouts. But that was the key item, was, to answer your question of why we're here tonight, is on the initial zoning conditions on the structures. And of course, we have spoken, we take, we appreciate the cooperation with the client, is how we have a successful outcome, is staffs recommending to give relief and allow for the custom building, but then allow for the street scape, the integrity of it to stay in place, and then we're able to bridge and then have connectivity with our other sites.
So that this street scape would mesh with the, was it painted in?
Yes, sir. Currently, Adam can talk to you a bit more about, this is a snapshot, because Tang and I have been reviewing this last couple of days. This is your existing street scape in front of your Sun's Honda dealership. So then we would look to then mirror that, and then also the custom sign, the ground mounted sign that would be present as well.
And it looks like the elevation, the rear elevation shows almost like a ramp going up the side of the building.
Yes.
Is that, is that to put a car on that ramp, or what's it?
It is to, the cars on display as a store. That was one of the initial ideas. It's kind of evolved, but it is for a car display, yes.
Would they be anchored down or anything if you're uncomfortable?
Yes.
They would be?
Yeah.
So really exciting. It's a new innovative project that can be brought forth to the City of McDonough. I'm showing you now, this is the, from your, our portfolio in the offices... I'm showing you now, this is the, from our portfolio in the offices, it shows you your current Sun's Honda, and then also there's the sign that's a part of their operation, same thing that Nissan's asking. And then also, too, your Nissan, excuse me, your Toyota dealership here, and then also your new Kia dealership that is across from your Sun's Honda.
I just wanted to introduce myself, Rodney Nicholas Burnt. I'm the construction director for the actual upper of the property. And I just want to make myself available for any questions relating to operation of the facility or any requirements from Nissan.
How many cars can be displayed on the top of the roof?
Well, it's not over the entire portion of the building. It's more of a display fronting the interstate. Yeah, it's not covering the entire building.
So make sure they are anchored down, and if they had future entry there, we're rolling off the top of the roof.
Because we tend to have some highway vehicles every once in a while.
It would be designed wherever the speed is in the area that's common, please.
Rodney and Tang, I think both of us are getting stuck on the rear of the building. I think a lot of time, businesses miss the opportunity of utilizing the rear of their building and some marketing tools. So I'm happy that you're thinking along those lines. How much conversation or how much consideration have you given to making the rear not look like a rear, but a double front building?
We are definitely looking into that direction, definitely. This was one of the initial conditions that we were thinking of, but part of it was to make that display a lot more prominent. We are looking at something other than just the ramp, basically. Yeah, so right now, that's in the works, but it would still be keeping the whole nature of the rest of the building, but it would not necessarily be...
It's a very visible lot, and I just wouldn't want you to miss that.
No, correct, yeah.
This is the rear elevation here that would be facing the interstate. And we're proposing some additional signage on each end, and then also some branding for the brand, and some interest with windows and that sort of thing, to give it a little bit of character, so it's not just a flat, blank facade.
Also, a small amount of landscaping would be worthwhile there, too, because you do have a visibility, and the nicer it looks, the better it is, not only for our community as a whole, but certainly for you, marketing.
I think there's a whole pile of landscape offered between I-75 and the building, so, yeah.
A question for Rodney. Rodney, are there any actions needed on our part, since there are plans to integrate additional signage on the rear? Is there any variance or anything of that nature that would be required? I know there is some guidance on where the signage can be placed, and the height of the letters, and all of that, so I don't...
Those are excellent questions. Right now, what we're doing is, we do have the original condition. There are the conditions in zoning, which we are giving relief on. But if there are additional signs, once we get the, once we get further into construction, those are the things that you'll order zoning deals.
Okay, remember if it was Toys R Us or one of those other businesses that...
You are correct. It's your Toys R Us, as well as your Brings to Go, as another of the businesses at your South Point Development. We have to go to the orders on new deals, because they change the size for visibility purposes. You are correct.
Just a couple of questions. You say next door to the new Hampton Inn, right in the corner lot, it's corner lot. Now, the road's free to go down to the hotel, it's going into the exit there.
Um, no, we're actually not right next to the Hampton Inn, because that's not as right next to the Hampton Inn. We're one lot over.
Rodney, you can talk about the conditions, because the conditions would not be removed from...
The evidence?
Yeah.
Yeah, that is correct. Your residual track, your conditions are still intact.
Any other questions? The city manager and... Ten pounds on that.
Um, I don't know a pound, but I can definitely pull those numbers together for you.
We talked about, I don't want to say my...
I don't either.
You might be with a house of value a little bit with some child tags, or... We're looking forward to having you, and thank you both for a wonderful presentation. If there are any other further questions, thank you, staff, thank you, Adam and Rodney, and everyone who's been involved. Looking forward to the...
Never intend to be returning back to you on this.
Right, um, yes, I was going to follow through. On the sixteenth, June sixteenth, you will be returning for a public hearing and a final decision. And things were feeling a little strange, and I just realized it's because our mayor wasn't here to say welcome to the new province one day. All right, item B, City of McDonald's and GDOT Transportation Improvement Projects. Purpose is to review and initiate the required actions warranted for continuation of the project design review in order to achieve a successful outcome with project construction of the following items. And the first one up is Jonesboro Road corridor, segment between Dar Street and Norfolk Southern Railroad. I'd like to, I know that we have three members that are missing. Would you prefer that we move that as we are going to be requesting a call meeting? Want to refer these items?
I'm not sure, but Josh, do you know if Mr. Cruz is going to be back next week? I think he was gone for two weeks.
I wasn't aware of that.
I do not know.
And I'll double-check to make sure, but I think he told me he was going to be on this weekend, next week, when he's back in town, but...
This is just a discussion, don't it?
Yes, yeah. Ultimately, if, 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 if you don't mind, I just kind of run into this a little bit.
Well, do we want to just take each item and just do a little discussion on each one? We do have citizens here that certainly do want to discuss Jonesboro Road with you.
I think it would be great for us to, for them to come and give us their concerns. And one of the things that, and the way I wanted to approach this is, as you know, we called it One Way Pair Project. We met with GDOT on the thirteenth of last month. They were calling specifically to address, you know, how major transportation projects, and the major one of them being the One Way Pairs, and what are we going to do? Because as you know, this project has been on the books since nineteen ninety-four, going twenty years. And at this time, GDOT has acquired right away based on the initial design that they had. I know there's been some questions, we've had as a city, we've had some questions and concerns regarding some aspects of the design, and however, over time, we've added some additional, to potentially want to see some additional things done to, added to the scope of work, obviously would bring a good effect to the corridor, basically. And those things were, one, looking at roundabouts of the terminus east and west, as well as looking at facilitating some changes in terms of how we can reconnect low Brown Street through via this system. And, you know, as a staff, we've looked at this recently, more recently. The GDOT came to us and basically said, "Hey, we've got the funding, we've got this schedule. The date is twenty eighteen for this to be completed." And they went and they did some analysis, and they came up with about five or six alternatives. And basically, those alternatives, I'll go through them real quick. Alternative one was to build one-way pairs, basically GDOT recommendation, as the designer, the design currently as we know it. Rodney has a copy of that, Rodney, you know, at some point, we want, I don't want to cover the mites, but to kind of display what that one-way pair system looks like. The other one was to build a two-way pair system. Alternative two-B was to build a two-way pair system left turn, move out of square. Alternative three was to reduce limited one-way pairs. Alternative four was basically a no-dead situation, even as it is. This current system, just as it is. And their analysis, what they basically said was, two-A through four would fail. Some of them in twenty nineteen would start to see diminishing in constrained roadways. And when we talk about constrained roadways, there's a terminology called level of service, LVS. Level of service, A is basically, you got a free one on the road. B through C, still pretty much a free one on the road. When you start hitting D, E, and F, it's when you're five o'clock, you look at the window here, and you see stop traffic. That's basically any... And so, basically, over time, what they said was, in twenty nineteen, we will start to see some of those, some of these alternatives operating at a level D, depending on peak area of traffic, morning, night, versus evening, night, peak traffic. Alternative one, at the end of the day, they looked at twenty nineteen and twenty thirty-nine. So they're out into the future. And basically, what they said was, after doing our models, all two-A, two-B, three, and four alternatives will all fail. That means they will all be operating level E and F at twenty nineteen. The only alternative was alternative one, which was the alternative that they've been building this system on, basically, and acquiring right away, would be the only one that would operate at a level C or D in that area based on peak times. And that was their recommended alternative. At our meeting, I told y'all that I would put together a memo, which we did, and talk to GDOT, because one of the concerns they said was, "Hey, guys, I know you guys want to see some additional things, a scope of work on here with guys to potential right away at the west terminus and the east terminus, roundabouts, those weren't part of our initial scope. If we add them, there's a potential that the project could lie beyond the completion of twenty eighteen. There's a possibility that we could actually potentially do some of our funding can be reprogrammed, and then we have to wait to get it programmed again, which would cause it to lie." But they did say, "Hey, in this period of time between now and twenty eighteen, what we could do, because the city has some stake in the game, we actually put splosh dollars towards east and west terminus, and we could program those either for right-of-way acquisition or for whatever, or even further design. But we could do those, and we've got some skin in the game, which obviously GDOT always loves, when you're putting something towards what you want to accomplish. And they said, "We could treat those as separate projects, and the one-way pairs, as we know it, start that construction, we get it moving, and at the same time, we can add those, we could look at adding those as additional separate projects, not long-term, because we don't want to lie there." And so with that, you know, my recommendation and talking to the staff, you know, alternative one has its issues, I'll be honest with you. And there's no perfect system, never ever will be. There's no perfect alternative. We could, we looked at this, and we could see some areas where we could go, "Ooh, we wish we could do that a little different." But it is what it is, and at this point, you know, twenty years in, GDOT is asking us to say, "Hey, City of McDonald's, what do y'all want to do? Give us y'all, what y'all want to accomplish? Is it the project as it is, or the project with some variation in scope? Certainly, we could either move on or put this thing to bed." And quite frankly, I say, "Look, we can talk to them on both levels. This meeting was just for a conversation between us, the council. I know we're missing some members, and they want us to act, not hastily, but they want us to act as quickly as possible." What I told Mr. Cabram, when I spoke with him in New Orleans Hill, is that, and I mentioned it to the mayor, even if we don't come to a quick resolution in terms of the sixteenth meeting, you know, I think GDOT wants us to be prudent, and within a specific period of time. Not next year, the same time, but probably even August or September, to be fish out a lot of these things and get some really true concrete, maybe even an additional E with GDOT, and say, "Okay, what would be the net effect if we do certain things? How would that truly impact the project?" And so for everybody that here, I spoke to them in Austin, and they would be here tonight, and they said, "Hmm, not really. Just, we'd like for y'all to do what y'all want to do, and then talk to us." So at some point, yes, they would love for us to send them a letter, either tell them to forget this project, move forward with the project, or move forward with the project in some variation. And I think those variations, when we do that, obviously, we should already know what GDOT's is going to say when we put those variations in, if we do. Because we can say, "Do the project as it is." One of the key things that we recognized when we looked at the project was that for some of our one or two of our local businesses, and specifically right there on the Jonesboro Corridor, between railroad tracks and Dar Street, we have two major businesses in that corridor.
You have more than two.
More than two, but, you know, major businesses in that corridor, that right now, they have the benefit of having their customers and service vehicles basically be able to have full-motion access in and out of their driveways. When I say full-motion, meaning I can make a right turn into the development, coming out of the development, I can make a left-hand turn and go back. Under the scenario that GDOT has proposed, we can't do that. There's a divided median, basically, when you come across that train track, there's a divided median that basically splits the two lanes going eastbound from the two lanes going westbound. And so, in essence, what they're forcing to is a right-in, right-out scenario, which means if they're truck-to-truck, truck-to-trail truck that's doing the delivery, they're going to turn in right-hand wires. Coming out, they ought to turn right-hand, go back along the strip if I can come back to them.
Mr. Carter, they're here.
Yes.
And they really wanted to address us.
Yes, and then tell us their concerns.
And they really wanted to be able to have a map here so that people could understand what they were talking about. And we had, you and I, had had conversations in which we agreed that we would take a time in which we could put the plans from GDOT, no, the actual drawings, the actual highway drawings, not that, can't see it as well. And the gentlemen that are here, if you would please, if you'd like to come to the table.
Frederick, while waiting for them to come, I just, Derek, I want to make one comment and ask a question. My concern with the twenty-year-old plan is that at some point...
Y'all have a seat, somebody can, y'all get where y'all can see the things. You want to come up here, Craig, and let them see where they can see the mouse. You have the one with the DOT drawing, the DOT, the highlight. No, not that thing, the actual drawing by DOT, we had those up there upstairs. When we looked at the load... No, you know, you had your drawings of DOT.
I think we've explained where you guys all from, yeah.
Well, I mean...
If I could finish finishing my comments.
We were trying to get them to see the...
That's okay, that's okay, not a problem. My concern with the twenty-year-old plan is, at some point, this was embedded in the public, and there was participation from the public. But we got, we're twenty years down the road now, and I'm still having lingering feelings about what happened on Jonesboro Road when we went from a two-lane to a four-lane, and the citizens didn't really feel as though they were informed and engaged in that process. And so, while of all the scenarios that GDOT has put before us, I do support alternative one, given the framework in which they presented the information. But I think the public needs to be engaged so that we can get feedback from them, that's one. Number two, when we're talking about a variation in the scope, how much of a variation can we have? I've not heard the concerns of these gentlemen, but definitely because Jonesboro Road is in my district, I am concerned about the businesses and the impact that it would have on those folks who have made investments that are along the Jonesboro Road corridor. So the scenario which involves the actual median, is there opportunity in removing the median and doing something different? I don't know how much of a variation we have. Is it just, does it involve design, or what does it involve? And you might not have that answer, but that is a question that I have of GDOT.
Yes, ma'am. And part of it, you know, I guess I want to get out of this is just that. And so we can make a list of those concerns, and when we meet with them again, we can say, "Hey, here's some of the things, some concerns we have that you might not have heard." I've been here two years, and I don't remember having a public meeting regarding this project. So, you know, so obviously, you guys have been longer than me, so if you can't remember, and Councilor Vincent can't remember, if you guys have been longer than... if you guys have been here longer than, than most, and, and Councilor Stewart.
There's not been a public meeting since I've been on council.
Okay, and I've spent a number of years. So, you know, maybe I think GDOT, we need to help that as part of one of the things we want to take back to GDOT and say, can we, can we open up a public dialogue regarding this process, so, you know, they can be a little bit more feedback. Um, and, and you guys can hear some of the concerns of the local businesses and some of their residents. I know one of, you don't mind me, so, you know, one of the designs we looked at was why did they move? Why didn't they connect Low Street to, to, uh, Brown? And then initially, when we first asked, me and myself, Tri Chief and, um, Police Chief and Rodney Keith were looking at it. I, I basically found out why they didn't do that, is because in essence, if you're coming from any of the sub, any of the older subdivisions, um, back along Low Street, um, yes, you still have an opportunity to come and get onto the switchback. The problem would have been, that little subdivision is right there, they in alternative would have had to drive all the way back to either Doris or all the way back to McDonough Parkway to come back around. So I think that was the pretext as to why they actually moved it at that point was, because everybody from Low Street can get to the switchback as well as the folks in that subdivision without having to go all the way to Doris and come around to get back into the square. So we finally figured out the, the method to their madness, as it relates to that, to the switchback being where it is.
I think the, one of the best things for us to do is to figure out the issues that you guys have, similar issues, smaller, you know, issues, not small, but things that we can do relatively easy, but when we start adding major scope to this project, they basically told us they're gonna, they're gonna leave us behind. And, and my biggest fear is them leaving us behind, we have to do something. Their, their model of number four, alternative number four, which is do nothing, it, it failed within two years, so, um.
Well, I.
Al- alternative one is obviously the way they, they're pushing us to go, but we do need to have little tweaks, but we got to make sure these tweaks aren't huge tweaks to where they put their hands up and leave us behind.
And then again, Mr. Elrod, we have to make sure that, uh, we make the necessary, we point out the real problems that people are going to be living with for twenty, thirty years down the road, that are not going to get smaller, they're going to get larger. And we're not going to have the opportunity then to do anything about it, because you have a major road system in its place. So whatever we want to do, we need to do now. And we do have a four year period before we're actually even scheduled for actual, uh, building and funding. And we do have a two week, uh, two year break period in which to solve any of these issues to the very best of our ability, both as a community and as GDOT, and it does not take us away from being shelf ready. So anybody who wants to go forward saying, making misstatements about that, they really shouldn't in the best interest of the public, because we really are talking about something that is going to affect the economic well-being, um, and the quality of life for our citizens, you know, for long after I'm sure I'm with all of them. And I just, um, really don't want us to overlook things, because we just think it needs to be stamped and done, and moved on. The, um, there, I want to let these gentlemen speak, there are issues. Mr. Gardner was going to have our department heads here that were going to look at things that were brought up during the DOT meeting, that they were going to report back to us on. I assume that's not going to happen today, but in any case, um, let's let these gentlemen introduce themselves and talk about their issues, because they're very real. They have met with the department heads, and they have gone over all of these issues directly with the department heads. And a report has been made to Mr. Gardner regarding this. So if you would, please, start and introduce yourself.
Sure, I'm Justin Lawrence, I'm, uh, with Natural Enclosures, Penn State Company, we just opened up the, the facility just across the railroad tracks.
I'm Terry King with Geranium Hall, S D R Construction.
And I'm Aaron Archer, Terry's business partner with Geranium Hall and S D R. We're at one oh three Jonesboro Road, a large white building.
And these gentlemen might want to tell you that they have a number of tenants, a number of businesses within Geranium Hall there. There are also, I don't, well, I shouldn't speak for you, but there are additional businesses that are planned, um, that they actually have, already have, uh, zoned, and that they have a future for that go directly behind the existing Geranium Hall, as well as the expansion, and you can speak to that.
We have additional fifteen acres behind our facility now that we want to develop in the future, either C three, mixed development, something. We haven't decided, uh, that's something in the next few years we'd like to do. Uh, and of course, that all is based on, um, access of this, uh, this property as well. As of right now, uh, with the current plan, I'm not sure how that's going to affect those decisions at this time.
Hey, there, there used to be a road when, uh, Rick originally had that building, there was a road that.
It's called Thomas Street.
Tomlinson Road, and it's also, it comes in and replant our two facilities. Now, we don't have access off of that road, uh, and it actually stops just where our street is. It's actually, I think it was supposed to continue along back to our property, up towards, um.
Bridges.
Bridges Road, but that was, that was never completed.
But both bridges and, and Doris Street remain, um, residential roads, not commercial. So go ahead and show them what your problems are there.
Okay, uh, basically on this, on this flathead concierge land, all along Doris Street, Rick Street, and up behind our shop. Um, also, our facility here, we only have one entrance to our shop, it's right here, literally, probably just outside the right way to the railroad tracks on one oh one Jonesboro Road. Uh, currently, um, a lot of our clients are obviously in McDonough, um, come from the McDonough area into our facility, will make a left and turn into our property. With that concrete median here, we think that might deter people from visiting our shop. Uh, we just did a lot, a, a big investment to that facility, it's, uh, obviously it was in rough shape when we got into it. Um, we have a nice display area.
Nice is understandable.
Beautiful.
Well, we had a facility in Stockbridge years ago, we actually did that, uh, since we moved in here, our residential business is probably, I understand, probably is doubling. Uh, I think we've so far increased our employment by fifteen employees, I believe, uh, and we could plan on continuing to grow that. Um, but we're afraid that if we have restricted access to our facility, that might decline. Uh, we don't want to put a hamper, uh, on our growth potential here. We're, we're very nervous about that median. Uh, what we would like to see is to have that concrete median just removed and have a train line there. Um, we are a, a GDOT certified subcontractor, so we understand the letting process and how they put this out the bid. This one we'll have to bid to, uh, to general contractors, probably, if it's going to go out in eighteen, summer of eighteen, they'll probably want to let until April of twenty eighteen, so there's plenty of time to get small changes like this, we're really going to get that changed. Even during the construction vending process, there's a vendums that can come out, which can make small changes to these construction documents. Uh, and that right there, you know, shouldn't be kind of hampered on the progression of this project. I think anybody who lives in McDonough area sees this, this is probably well needed, uh, to, to release the traffic in this area. And I think it'll be good for our business with a few small implications.
You, um, he also, at the meeting, um, um, Danny Fitzpatrick pointed out that they had, um, gone from zero walk-ins to over five hundred thousand dollars worth of walk-in, um, um, business, just since, just since June.
And that, that's, that's more, that's more than annual.
And that's people driving to you.
Driving, riding. Our, our old business in Mc, over in Stockbridge on forty two was a more of an industrial area. We had no desire to have walk-ins, we didn't have facilities for walk-ins. Uh, when we renovated this facility, we did it specifically for that, knowing the amount of volume going through this area. Then we put the nice sound and nice landscape thing we're doing, we're still doing improvements, we got more plan for the area. Um, but, uh, we knew that was going to, that's why we bought this facility, to do that, just to get the walk-in business. Uh, our focus, our main focus is on the residential end. Uh, currently, we're about six percent residential, about forty percent commercial, you need a good balance. Uh, and because of, actually, both ends of our business, the commercial and residential, we do have a lot of, um, uh, deliveries made to that facility. And we have a concern, one, uh, giving those deliveries to and from us, uh, and two, getting out our, um, crews in the morning to get, to do the jobs. And also turning out right to the city, that's probably going to increase the traffic going through there, because we have tractor trailers and more construction vehicles going in and out of that area. And just from a, a standpoint of entrance purposes and trying to get vehicles, we're concerned about just tight turns going through the McDonough area, uh, we don't want to do that. That's definitely a concern of ours.
And it's going to push a tremendous number of, not only from this business, but from Geranium Hall, but certainly from his business, the tractor trailers are going to be pushed through the switchback. And, and that's a real concern. It's a real concern for them, for their deliveries, and they also have a railroad siding, and this is things that Danny asked that, you know, we, make sure we pointed out, that if they grow their business in the future, they would be at a point of being able to receive shipments from a railroad siding, which would increase their large trucks for future deliveries and dispersal. So, um, that in itself is, uh, a problem.
Justin, so tell me again what your recommendations were.
Well, with this project, we're looking, like I said, basically the concrete median that's going to begin just, uh, just to the west side of the railroad track. And I believe it's going to proceed west to Dorsey Street.
Dorsey.
Dorsey, I'm sorry, Door Street, uh, which basically they're, basically cut access to our facility.
To both, to both.
To both facilities.
And what he's speaking on, what Justin is saying, it, it corresponds with my, you know, Iowa building. We have wash trucks that come in to deliver stuff for our construction company that we have, you know, on the third floor of Geranium Hall building.
And Tomlinson is our only point of entrance for us, we don't have another point of entrance at all.
And really, even now with Tomlinson Street, it's actually, the entrance to Tomlinson actually goes to the parking lot as well.
Yes, it does go to our parking lot, and you know, when, if this median is put in, that's really going to put a damper on not only our construction company with people coming in, but our event center. They are also, you know, on Thursday, Friday, Saturday nights, when there's a wedding and event, retirement party. I mean, we have seventy-five to eighty cars there.
We have tenants as well. Um, First Stop Driving Academy is in that building.
Which we knew them from Spain, didn't we?
Neither one of those could attend, Rand Tech is in that building, uh, we have Farmer's Insurance going in in that building, coming up very soon. Healing Touch Therapy is working on right now, getting their C O to be in that building. So we have, we have four businesses in our lower level, as well as we have ninety-four, ninety-five, and ninety-six Tomlinson, which we already have zoning for, for office space, which is behind us in the center of our eighty-five car parking lot.
Do you feel the, the idea of a turn lane would help as well?
A turn lane would be ideal, because Farmer's Insurance, you just take Farmer's Insurance, I mean, we're, we're proposing, I mean, we're projecting, right? Three hundred policies, three hundred fifty policies a year, so I mean, that's a lot of walk-in business that's going to have to come there for that, for that business to stay at our facility, to have a profitable building. I mean, nobody wants to see that building like it was, just like Justin said, nobody wants to see that, their building like it was, for one of the main corridors.
Which is the gateway.
Yeah, in and out of McDonough.
And, and one other small change we might like to see is possibly even a, a red light at Dorsey.
At Door Street.
Doris, I'm sorry, at Door Street, because, uh, you know, that helps slow traffic as well going through this area.
It would provide a break, you have the, the train tracks are already slowing to a little bit, slowing a little bit more at the, at the cross section right there. Plus, I think you guys have a park going in right across there, and that could play right into it.
One thing, um, they did not, they expressed, they did not prefer having the roundabout. They, they preferred a red light over the roundabout, because the way the roundabout is presently placed, they feel like it's far too close to them, and would, the traffic would go speeding by, and it'd be very difficult to make turns with a turn lane or without a turn lane, simply because of the movement, that the roundabout should be, if it is utilized at all, would have to be, move further west. And, uh, further west and to the south. Uh, the other, the red light. And the red light, when they looked at it, they thought that Dar Street itself, as it's set up, that Dar Street as it exists could become a turn lane directly in, you know, a right to feed lane, turn lane, and then you could have improved that intersection right there enough to, for a red light to allow left-hand turns and what have you, and movement directly into the park. Um, and they, that's what they would prefer to see, and their whole investment here, um, I don't want to sum up for them, but this is exactly what they were all saying, all of the tenants that were there, was that they're terribly dependent on that road frontage, and as Ms. Vincent pointed out, in her district, which this is her district. Um, and while I represent the entire city, she represents the district as such, and I feel for her, because I have repres, been a representative of that district also. And it was terrible on Jonesboro Road, um, when, uh, there wasn't enough discussions concerning the cuts in the medians. It has caused a continuous problem for one of our major shopping areas there, for people to get back, to recognize that they're there, to make it easy, you know, to get in and out. And, um, so she, I'm sure, would like to speak with y'all, uh, when you have time, you know, to meet with her, and she would have other things she would like to address with you.
Fred, do you feel like this, this type of idea would really hamper us with GDOT, just in your, your feeling? Because this, this is a major change in scope here.
No, I don't think it is.
I don't, I don't either, I just want.
You know, and, and this is the reason why I think an updated public process would have helped.
Yeah.
Because this, this, this kind of feedback to them would have been, would have been helpful.
Because they, they probably didn't even consider that when they put the median in.
You think about how long this thing has been on the shelf, and, and sitting here, these guys just made a good investment, not knowing that this stuff was planned, they didn't send any expense anyway. And, and this guy was talking about the Jonesboro Road corridor, a lot of this stuff was on, on Henry Gowney's books long before these areas developed. It, it just hit people at the wrong, at the wrong time, and then businesses along that corridor happened. And now, like you said, I mean, the shopping center right down the street, you have the country, the gas station to come on to Kelly Road, because you can really have a full access and get on, get out of the median.
Even with the city working with GDOT as long as it has recently, they were still not even aware of a, of a multi-million dollar park that has been on our books and part of our planning and everything for over ten years. And, and that was totally overlooked. And the reason the roundabout came about was because that had been introduced, um, by A R C and DOT several years back, but that was still completely overlooked, and it was as a solution to not having a red light because of proximity to the railroad, based on their own roots. But now, because the switchback that they're going to have on the east side of the railroad track, that proximity of that red light is certainly, uh, similar to the proximity on Doris Street. So therefore, I think that they would be able to, um, you know, have new attention drawn, you know, to that area. Also, if they're going to put a turn median in, they can only start at Tomlinson Street to begin to look to move towards a turn lane because of, they can't move to the left simply because of the two lanes coming directly, Jonesboro Street directly over the railroad track. And, um, and of course, uh, Natural Enclosures is aware of that.
Right, Rodney, thank you.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, you're always one step ahead of me, so thank you.
Yeah, Fred, Fred can queue me, so that's where, he can say we're ready for it.
Can you please print out for me, and I know you won't be able to do it now, but I'd like to, uh, see that entire section from Bridges Road all the way up Doris, uh, with the Jonesboro Road frontage. And, uh, Justin, Terry, and Aaron, I just want you guys to know that we are concerned about our businesses. And so I, I don't want you to leave here feeling, uh, any type of way other than they're concerned. We, uh, recognize that having, um, another governmental entity like GDOT, it's, it's somewhat challenging. We don't want to jeopardize the project in terms of getting relief from the traffic congestion, because we all stand to benefit from that. So if, if, we can just, um, you know, work really closely to, together on this, and I appreciate your, your feedback, because that's, that's really, really, uh, important. Those are some really good ideas. Um, I, I still think, Frederick, that we need to push for having a public meeting so that, you know, the residents and, and the other businesses can, can engage as well. I even thought about those that are closer to the square and how the one-way pairs would possibly impact them with having traffic heading, uh, towards I seventy-five and not coming into the square.
I, 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 I think that's valid, I think GDOT should welcome, because obviously, I think one of the things they do look at is what the impacts are going to be, and obviously, if they hadn't heard any of this through, through prior conversations, and, and as, as Mr. Marty said, I mean, there's been a huge lot of disconnect and, and discussion between even the city and GDOT, and GDOT and the city and vice versa. Um, you know, there's, there's still an opportunity there for them to look at more with this, to make sure that it would work and, and give feedback, genuine feedback to, to these business owners, because obviously, their businesses are gonna be impacted greatly by it. Um, so that, yes, I would say that should be one of the things we are going to look at. One, having a public meeting here, um, even if it's just another meeting to discuss, to allow for them to have input, but an overall public meeting somewhere along, either here along that corridor, affected corridor for people to come. And they could show folks how they came up with their conclusion and why they did it, and then people could understand better. Um, kind of what they did, even though, and I know some didn't agree with this whole, whatever thing is on the interstate. But to have that open door, open door thing, minus links thing. Um, but to have that dialogue, because obviously, these guys have made major investments over the last four or five years, and obviously, this thing has been here for the past twenty, almost. And, and so, yes, they should deserve, they, they deserve a right to be heard, they deserve a right to have their concerns, um, heard, heard. And to see where GDOT can validate making those changes to, to, to the project, to facilitate what they need to do. I mean, just on, without me, and I can't, and we tried to kind of get an idea, engage it with on the roadway system, you know, how wide is, how wide is the roadway going to be to allow for a tractor trailer to have a full left turn and be able to merge? Is that something that's gonna be, have to be left out? Because obviously, they can't put across four, three lanes, cause they gotta get in one of those opposite lanes across the street. Um, the good, the great spot by that is you've got folks slowing down at the railroad tracks.
You've got a natural.
Um, you've got an actual constrained, um, position. Um, so how can they facilitate that truck, tractor trailer, or big truck, or delivery truck making that left turn? They don't have the morning light to look at.
Probably one of the things Gil said about the red light at, at Doris. I mean, that would be a little bummer. Just, I'm speaking now, the train is our friend in the morning time, when we get ready to leave. You know, our crews are leaving because it stops the traffic, and we, you know, we can.
And that, and that won't change.
No, that's not changing.
So, that, that will help you in, in certain times as well.
And, uh, something too, and I, I know you're going to want to have more conversations with them.
I do, and I want.
They, but that entire block there, um, we as a city, we've talked about how important that is economically to us. And these gentlemen have had talks, and they are continuing to have talks concerning the entire block and an investment there.
I mean, let me say this, because I didn't know those conversations were, were taking place, but I, I advocated very strongly, and this council did approve that area as, as being a part of, of a redevelopment corridor. So, I've asked Rodney to print out that, that entire area, because I wanna know what your thoughts are. Um, not here, not today, because that's definitely not, not this conversation, but I worked extensively with Rick when he had that building, trying very desperately to make it what it was meant to be for the city. So, I'm, I'm glad that you all are there making investments, because it's very, very important.
And, um, as long as we continue to have the residential, which is there and is permanently there, we can't look at Dar Street as a public corridor, uh, and right now, we certainly can't look at Bridges Road as that. So, the frontage is key to the investment of that entire city block, that frontage and Tomlinson Street itself. So, um, we, this is not something that we can just lightly say to GDOT. This is something that we have to have as come together as a council for, uh, not only their investment, but any other investments there, and knowing how key this is going to be to our economics of, um, the overall downtown area.
Yeah, but that's it, uh, we can't ignore Dar Street better.
No, we're not ignoring it. What I'm saying is, we can't turn commercial vehicles out onto Dar Street. You can't do that. It's residential.
I think he's just talking about in terms of just improvement.
No, 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 they're talking about, uh, great improvements there.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, improve.
Yes.
So, I can all pay.
But that's, that would be up to the city.
Thank y'all for being here.
Thanks, man.
Anything else that we might be able to?
No, I think we touched on.
But you, I do know that y'all want to be kept up to date on everything that's doing, that we're doing. Um, they are certainly going to, uh, keep themselves advised, cause already pointed out that they have, they are DOT certified and what have you, so they do understand the workings of it. Um, they're going to be great advocates for themselves, but I hope what we can do is be advocates together, uh, in this process, and make it a positive for all of us.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Steve, can you get their contact information?
And as, as we schedule those meetings, try to get those meetings scheduled, GDOT, you guys, a little GDOT thing, you guys, um, between Adam and Rodney, and calling you guys, and saying, hey, we've got to be scheduled, or publicly scheduled.
And you know what, just by way of kind of collective apology, I didn't know about the meeting that you guys called with the city, because I would have been there, and that probably would have helped to enlighten you on a lot of other things as well, so, um, keep in touch.
But now you'll have a ti, a chance to meet with them and provide them everything.
And anytime you wanna come to our facility.
Hey, I just drool every time I drive past, thank you.
Um, I'd like to thank the staff for making themselves available when they did ask for the meeting right away, which they did, and which gave the staff time to be able to go over the concerns there. So that if we were having major discussions today, they would have had some input. And so, um, Sandra, that was just an effort to accommodate, um, the citizens, and to alleviate any questions they might have, and to give our, uh, staff a chance to be able to function. Um, but they do want, uh, to be in touch with you, and I have sent your information, but I will continue. They will get it to you.
I have, I have a question for, for Lee before we move on really quick. Um, and, and you might not have the answer today, but I just wanna make sure it's on the radar. And in light of the fact that there are some concerns now, uh, regarding the roundabout, and that we have the roundabouts on this loss list, uh, we need to have a discussion about how we actually, uh, I don't know if remedy is the word, but how, how do we address that whole scenario and the implications, uh, based on this discussion?
Uh, one, as long as we are utilizing funds to improve, um, those areas that we designated those funds for, or, um, individually or otherwise, I think we.
I, I think my concern is, I don't know if we specifically stated roundabout, but there are some, some county involvement, uh,
We did.
as well, so there might need to be some intergovernmental collaboration, or, or at least discussions on, on that point.
I feel confident that we can solve that problem.
So, um, and with us, there's going to be the question of, and it needs to be answered sooner and later because of the entrance to the park. We need to be able to answer sooner or later whether there's gonna be a red light, or whether there's going to be a roundabout, because that matters, uh, for them to being able to, uh, get the entrance to the park taken care of, and get the park open to the public. So, uh, Ms. Benson, I'll be happy and, uh, to work with you, and happy to have the assistance from anyone on council, making sure that we get this addressed quickly, not, uh, a year or two down the road. Because I think that's something that, uh, GDOT would like us to do, is address it quickly, and it would serve both of our purposes. So, um, having said that, do you have anything else that you wanna say concerning, um, concerning, uh, the one-way pairs at this point, or do you want to defer that for a later meeting?
I mean, we can defer, I mean, as you can tell, I mean, this ain't gonna be resolved, process is.
No.
I'm just gonna be on switch. Um, because while we've got to be able to have a public meeting at GDOT, um, and anything, I think at that point, they need to hear every concern, it's all been documented, and then be able to come back to us and say, hey, you know, these are what we think we can do to incorporate GDOTs into the project. These business owners and the rest of the residents need to know what goes on. And, and so, what I've got to do here is to basically send a message over to GDOT, of course, and, um, do they look at holding a public meeting, and then get their response fired.
Um, I, Mr. Gardner, I had, uh, residents over at Toby Springs, um, begin to ask questions about how they're going to get in and out, uh, whether or not they will have sidewalks available to them. So, um, I realize a lot of that is rental property, but the property owners themselves need to be notified that they need to come to a public meeting and have any questions answered at that time, along with the people that, um, you know, are residents there and own their own properties. Those are the ones that have been talking to me about, you know, how they're going to get in and out, and, and what's going to be made available to them, and how it's going to affect them overall. Um, there are a few property owners still left in Marion's Way, but the property owners that are, that own there and rent those properties, again, we may need to make a, every effort to notify them if we're going to have a public meeting, to make sure that their, um, questions are addressed at that time.
I think we're gonna have to make sure we notify the entire, the entire corridor.
Right, absolutely.
Exactly, exactly.
On an individual basis.
Right.
So, are we ready to move forward, uh, or? All right. Is everyone else comfortable with that, moving forward? Um, then we're moving to item number nine, which is the.
Number two. I still have, and number three, yeah. Well, number three under B, north-south one-way pair segment between Town Square and Alexander Park.
Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sure, thank you. Uh, this is your project that's tied to your LCI supplemental study. Uh, one of the areas that we started is gonna be in your northeast quadrant, uh, the two properties. One is Clay Plaza, and then the other one is the Pope Building, and Community Development will be assisting, uh, Adam with. The area that we're gonna be looking at, tag teaming, is your corridor from the Town Square to Lawrenceville Street. And what it involves is, um, doing some red dieting, street skate. Of course, this is your new, uh, the proposed side of your new municipal core building. Uh, right now, the proposal just has minimal street skates, so Adam and I will be returning back to look at how to strengthen this segment of your northern segment of your one-way pairs. Then we're also gonna be looking at, on Big Springs, which is over here to the right. Uh, your Big Springs Park is then the integration of the corridor and the pedestrian, uh, multi, I won't say multi-pathway, cause it's gonna have pedestrian bicycles, and then the connectivity to it. And then we're gonna continue on along your forty-two corridor up to Alexander Park. We'll switch over real quick with respect to time. And this project, uh, we've sort of been on standby with this project until we really got a full understanding of what we're gonna do with your one-way pairs between the Town Square and the railroad tracks. So, what, previously, this was the work that Mr. Cheek and I had, uh, worked on. What we're looking at is here, some, uh, improvements in the, your Town Square, and then this is the intersection we were just at. And then, moving forward to your north, northern part, this is your gateway, doing some additional plantings, and then start doing what's called, uh, first is road dieting, is taking away some of the asphalt, putting in, um, bike path lanes, and then taking us up to your Alexander Park entrance. This is your village at Spring Creek, and then there would be a crosswalk with a hawk signal to allow for connectivity to one of your active senior adult communities. So, like I said, we've been on standby with this project while we've worked out the details of that other segment. But now it's important that we start looking at the scheduling, and this is where we'll be working with our, uh, consultants. We do have a schedule which you were provided a copy of, and I will be sending out more information. Uh, excuse me, Adam and I will be sending out more information on this to you as we get the foundation of this project ready in conjunction with the other project that you already are working on, we just discussed. So, I just, for example, wanted to highlight that, because we have received correspondence, and Adam and I do need to proceed forth with meeting and then working on the schedule. There for ten, that's all I have.
All right, then, uh, we'll move to item C, unless there's questions by council. Item C, discussion of the correct spelling of Low Street in McDonald.
Yes. It has come to our attention, I know this seems a very minor, intrigual item. The reason why we're having to bring this to you, we fortunately know, the incorrect name has been adopted in previous actions by street names by the council, so we will need to go and undo, and then add the new correct spelling. Uh, Mayor Copeland will, was expected to provide to some historical information tonight, who will be providing it to you on the sixth name.
And, and the correct way is L O W.
I don't know.
Yes.
I mean, that's just, I don't think you need information, just.
Well, with, with respect, and I guess also to the family, we just wanted to make sure that we're going about the process, and that they understand we are, uh, acting upon it.
Yeah, cause I know you got a couple of emails about it as well, so it's just.
It's just more or less house. Well, no, we will have to, I will need to give the city attorney about the due process on the street name.
I mean, what, what actions do you need us to take?
Well, previously, it's required of public hearing, but I will need to take a look at that information to see what is appropriate.
So, we're gonna have to change something?
Yeah.
We're, we're exactly as it was, the street, the sign is actually L O W.
Well, the sign was changed with respect to some of the complaints that we've got, but we have to go through. The L O W.
Cause if it was L O W before, it had to go through the process. If, if we change the paperwork, maybe, if that didn't happen, we should just.
Right. Just change the sign.
Yeah, and what happened, the, is on this, is to GDOT, the adoption of the street names at the city index, it has the L O W E.
See, and that's what you have to look at, phone nine-one-one, you know, on one call, it's, um, addressing.
Yes.
That's what you gotta basically, to see what those.
It's been used in a number, I went back in the research, and that's what I've gotta provide to Lee, and then Lee can direct us on what the appropriate action is.
We'll move.
That's all I have, thank you.
Move to item number ten, discussion, and, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, number nine. FY two thousand and fifteen budget presentation and publication. Mr. Gardner? It's your pleasure.
Chief? Uh, Mayor Council, uh, tonight, as, as required by law, uh, in terms of the adoption, adoption of our FY fifteen budget, we're required to have a public hearing tonight for the first read of the, the doc, uh, budget document. And so, part of that is, we're gonna go and give you, uh, overview of the budget. Now, this has been a process we started back in, um, November of last year, with the, um, adoption of the calendar, uh, development of the budget calendar, the adoption of the calendar, presentation of that calendar by the mayor and council. And as I explained to y'all, that, that calendar would be a through the process, and it has, um, in terms of, of sticking to each of the timeline in that, in, in there. But overall, um, you know, we've basically been able to go through the process, and as you know, we've had a number of meetings with you guys, where we've basically come up with what, what our estimated revenues are going to be, what our estimated expenditures were, and as you know, initially, we had a, a fourteen million dollar expense to a twelve million dollar revenue. Um, obviously, that doesn't work, and through that process, we went through, working with our department heads, numerous meetings, and basically, paring down that, that, that fourteen million dollars request. And as we sometimes, as you've heard me say in the past, you know, there are some wants and some needs. Our goal is to get to the need, what does it take for us to run this, to run our operations in the most efficient and effective way, recognizing that even some needs won't get met based on priorities. And so, as we go into that process, we were able to pare down, um, our, our fourteen million dollar request from the department heads, uh, to come in line with our, with our revenues. And our revenues have adjusted somewhat, uh, through this process. As you know, early in the years, we start to look from a straight-line process on what our revenues are. You, you basically look back at which, month-by-month basis, uh, uh, what you've been collecting, but we know that there are times when certain revenues come in more so than others. So, to take all of that into consideration, and then to look, as we, as I explained to you guys, as close as we get to, to June, the better we are in, in estimating what our revenues would be. And so, part of what I wanna kind of go over with you guys, is kind of give some, uh, highlights of the budget, um, discuss. And so part of what I want to kind of go over with you guys is kind of give some, uh, highlights of the budget, um, discuss the recommended general fund budget. Uh, discuss the recommended all other funds, which are enterprise funds and special funds. Uh, as you know, general fund is just one aspect of our, uh, uh, budget process. Uh, and those are usually, but general fund is tied to, to your taxes. Um, and, uh, other funds are, are enterprise funds, which are obviously our business operating into these water and sewer. Uh, and our special funds are considered our SFOs fund. And so we'll go over some of those and those that makes together to become what we see as our citywide operational FY budget. And then, once again, and you'll see some familiarity from the last slide, uh, presentation we did to you guys and just talk about some things down the future. So just to keep kind of knocking you on the back of the shoulder saying, these are some things we need to be conscious of that are, that are going to hit us, you know, not maybe next year or the next year, but they're pretty much close to happening. Uh, and so when we talk about our highlights, you know, one of the key things that initiatives we embarked on a couple of years ago is looking at our use of information technology, where the city was and where we need to be. Um, and, and you guys have heard me say this before, I've said it in other description, each city is, we're competitive entity. We're a competitive entity against our adjacent cities and, and counties for business entities to come locate, uh, for, for residential to come and, and make this place their home. We're competing, uh, and part of, part of the process of us competing is how do we utilize information technology to disseminate information, to efficiently utilize, do business processes. And one of the things we've learned through that process is that, you know, our service system was truly antiquated and, and that gentleman there is our one and only IT guy. Uh, and so he's been basically rebuilding our, our service system, uh, as best he can, taking some outdated stuff and putting it back online. Um, because when those other ones broke, the court and the police, he's been facilitating. So part of what we did in the SFOs was to put our IT infrastructure as part of the SFOs and, and some of that is in here. What you'll see is part of our IT budget, when you look at the budget is the software side of that, because the hardware don't work without the software. And we can't put those in the SFOs, but the software that needs to be upgraded. As many of you know, XP is no longer a viable entity under Microsoft. Um, we do use XP here, uh, and so that's going to be a migration process that we go through. Um, document imaging and storage has been a major issue, that, that's going to be a major undertaking for IT. Uh, and I know Lee's been talking about that recently, but how do we get away from, uh, paper and being able to actually do digital storage of, of our files and, and our documents? Um, a good example of how we've got many books all around is still, still scary on that there. Um, but also looking at audio, video. We're trying to record this new room for the public that are not here and that's the system we're using right there.
Okay.
So it's antiquated, so we're trying to figure out, we've gotten some estimates on what it would take to facilitate this room, but also our existing court. And getting out on the audio, video and then transferring that to the new building if, if, if Mayor Council so choose to move in that direction. One of the other big initiatives is our development codes, we just talked about reselling and architectural designs and, um, overlay districts and the such. You know, our codes are very old, um, and for a while here, when I first got into the city journey, was telling me, I don't know what code, but our guys are operating them. Um, and she probably still hearing about me saying that in a public meeting, but still we need to address it. As you know, we had issues with design ordinance and we're trying to get that done and hopefully we want any more flags in the couple buildings and get us more by the press. Um, but those are some of the things we're going to be addressing and in the process of doing that, truly unified development code process, some we've never had before. Um, public safety still plays a major role, um, in our community from police and fire. Um, and being able to help an efficient and effective fire department and police department and we'll talk a little bit more about that. Um, one of the initiative the mayor kicked off this year was to look at our, our city operations and management. Um, I think a three hundred and sixty review of that is needed. And so we were able to put in the budget of paying compensation as well, because we want to make sure that we are addressing the organization as a whole from the three hundred and sixty reviews. So that was, that's in the budget. Um, our IT administrators in the budget as well, it's, we're not asking for an increase, we're able to just switch around some costs to, to try to get, um, Steve some help. As you guys know, Steve is a one-day demand show right about now, um, hobbling around city hall on a bicycle because he almost broke his foot moving stuff around. But at the same time, you know, he's required to stand up infrastruc, IT infrastructure at basically four locations. And, and we're a one-line show for an organization our size, that's, that's, it doesn't work. We're going to burn this over here and, and trying not to do that. Um, improvements in, in transportation, we just, we just talked about that. Um, you know, we've got some major transportation needs that, that, that are going to come up, the one-way pairs is one of them, the downtown street, street we just talked about. Uh, we're, you know, we're going to be looking and putting some, uh, some funding towards that and, and that power. And then our intersection improvements are part of the SFOs, those are some of the major initiatives. Um, other highlights, what are we seeing? Um, Henry County's projecting an eighteen percent increase, we don't think they're going to reach there. Um, I bet I think they're going to reach ten percent and then obviously when you go through those folks who are going to appeal to digest, you probably look at it last night. Um, but we were conservative at ten, um, so we're a slight increase in the phrase value. Um, and that's region, all Henry County's not seeing, you know, I can tell you for a resident of Stockbridge, my values aren't going anywhere. Um, so a good part of it being in the Denny areas, there are some slight increases going on. Uh, sales, but local option sales stocks, um, is also we're seeing a slack of increase in that. Um, as you know, we've proposed to help, I saw new developments come online here, if you just heard, is one of them. Uh, there's going to be a new Nissan dealership right across Hanavon Parkway, uh, that's coming up. Um, Fred's is coming out of, out of the ground and there are a couple of other entities that are being proposed right now, um, that Adam and Jim Baker working on. But we also have eighty-one, we have the new Chipotle and the, the developments surrounding that, 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 um, business that are coming out of the ground as well. So, you know, we're starting to see activity, construction activity, but also, you know, we will see some sales stocks going up. Insurance premium, I told you guys about this before. Uh, this is tied to insurance policies written in the city, the city has grown exponentially over the last ten years, a hundred and sixty percent from two thousand to two thousand and ten. We continue to grow right around a three percent to three and a half percent growth rate even today. So we're not declining in population, we're continuing to grow in population. And as I said before, our city clerk is getting more open records requests for subdivisions from developers that are interested in buying and now coming out and growing with new residential. Uh, talk about the commercial fines and forfeitures, um, we see that going up in the evening, um, uh, over, over this current year. So we budgeted for a slight increase, even though we have the issues surrounding the tickets, I know we'll be reapplying to do track, to do, um, speed, um, review of, uh, on our road base. And that, I know, I've achieved that first, that list, made this rent to, to, uh, G dot, they approved it, I think it's on its way to, uh, keep getting, the current.
The.
Um, is on its way there, so we'll see that probably coming back online. Oh, Jesus, this is difficult. Um, when we talk about our, our revenues, we, we have multiple revenue streams in terms of general fund. Taxes being one of them, license and permits, any governmental royalties, rents and royalties. We have interfund where we transfer some monies back and forth, um, fines and forfeitures in what we call a general government. Um, our biggest source of revenue for general fund is taxes and I'm going to break that down for you so you'll see what that seventy-five percent actually entails. Uh, lost, uh, is part of that as well as our property tax. But license and permits and fines and forfeitures make up, um, the remainder of that, that's fines and forfeitures at fourteen percent. Uh, and then we see the breakdown based on rents and royalties that we get from rents and royalties, uh, and general government is revenue source. And let me break that down, what does that taxes look like, cause everybody's always concerned about taxes. Taxes doesn't mean just property tax, it means sales tax, insurance premium tax, alcohol tax. And that's the basic breakdown of those taxes, thirty-one percent and it's pretty, pretty much even statistically between property tax and sales tax at two point eight million and two point eight one, eight million. In terms of what we see in revenues, uh, franchise fees, those franchise fees are fees that we collect from Georgia Power, uh, cable companies, any of those folks who put facilities in our right-of-way. They have to pay us in order for, to, to put, to have the right to do that. So those, those what we call franchise fees come from Georgia Power, um, Charter Cable, um, uh, Xfinity, if you get any, Comcast. All of those folks that pay us to have the right to have, um, facilities in our right-of-ways. And that's a major revenue source for us as well at one point one million. Let me talk about the expenditures and what we see from our expenditures, uh, this year. Um, personnel has increased slightly and, and not, not so, not from the fact that we've added anybody, but one of the major costs that we're incurring is part of our, uh, growth and, and just overtime. And is our insurance premium is, is, is scheduled to increase, um, by a hundred and sixty-eight. And I try to catch some of the higher categories, uh, in terms of what's going on in those areas, uh, overtime, uh, we, we built into increase and that was, you know, none of us were ready for two major storm events, uh, this year. To have our police and public works department out, one, making sure the roadway was safe. Two, uh, making sure that the roads were clear. And as you guys know, we got a wonderful report from the citizens and business owners that talked about McDonald's streets being cleared. Um, anytime you might have allowed for our folks to move around after those storms. That's the work of the public works department, we put a huge amount of overtime when these guys had to go idea, um, overnight and spend basically three nights rotating twelve-hour shifts, um, to make that happen. And so one of the things we wanted to make sure is that let's not get caught off guard, let's have some buffer and then if it's not used, it goes back to from balance. But to make sure that we, we're able to capture overtime in a serious way. Um, purchasing contracts is, we see that going down, even though we have some initial costs in our management study and our UBC, unified development code costs are in there. Also, what's gone up a little bit is our liability insurance has gone up a little bit, um, by forty-four thousand. But that, that line item which incurs our professional services, um, um, travel, training, um, uh, technical services, our contracts, that is going down. Some, um, supplies have increased by about two hundred and seven thousand from one point one to one point three. A lot of hours is, you know, our chief has been deferring on ammo and some other things, guns for a while. And he said, Frederick, I don't think I could defer anymore. Um, and so we need to look at bringing our, our, our stockpiles and our supplies back, because some of these things, correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, are date-timed. And so at some point we don't use them, I think bulletproof vest has a certain time period before five years and at that point you got to replace them. Um, and as the recent event proved, you know, even though you wear vests, you're capable of losing an officer in spite of, um, you just heard what happened in Griffin. So we want to make sure our guys are protected. Um, most of the machinery and equipment costs have slightly increased, um, payment to others, a lot of that comes from our court activities. Uh, because as we do more adjudication of court activities, we have to pay to certain, uh, entities and some of those are drivers ad training fund, um, the county jail fund, victim, victim assistance funds. We actually have to pay that based on the volume of activities going on in our court, we have to pay out money to those entities. And so that's why that is going down. Um, when we talk about expenditures, you know, where's the bulk of our general fund money go? And we talk about salaries and benefits and purchase contract services, supplies, machine repair payments, uh, forty-five percent, sixty-eight percent of our, um, our funds, our revenue expenses are cap, cap, capturing the salaries and benefits. Um, that's not unlike any other business or any other government agency out there, that's pretty much in the standard role of where we are in terms of those, uh, purchasing contract, uh, services of right around one more, uh, two point one million dollars of eighteen percent. Uh, and then machineries and supplies make up the rest of that general fund expenditure go when we talk about by type. And so what we did was kind of be a comparison of where we were last year to this year. Um, and you could tell there are really drastic variations and, and our expenditures from year to year, they're pretty much close. Um, and so with that, I just want to kind of give you an idea what that chart looked like, I wish I were you and going on video and cooking it up. But this is what it looks like in terms of our general government. When we look at public safety, uh, general government, highway, streets, community and economic development and promotions, I break it down into this category. General government being Mayor Council, the administrative services, finance, IT, uh, city manager. Um, the bulk of our expenditures are captured in public safety. Uh, and that's not unlike any other government agency, we're right around the same fifty-four percent. And I continue to say that's much better than the city I just came from. That city is right around seventy-something percent for public safety. Um, when you talk about where that general fund expenditures going out is arising. Um, so our percentages break down there, general government, which is our administrator, makes up twenty-one percent. Um, and basically a, so just to tie between, um, our, uh, supply, uh, community development, uh, highway and streets and what they're doing. You know, one of the things I always like to show you guys is talk about, you know, where we've been in population, this is going back, um, to two thousand and eight and being able to track our population, um, to the actual census period and then moving forward. Um, you know, looking at two, three, three and a half to three percent growth rate, um, in our population. Um, the census did our last gap to twenty-twelve, that's where they got our twenty-twelve population at, twenty-two thousand five hundred. We've basically projected it somewhere around where we are now with twenty-thirteen and they are, this is where we are, based on the growth rate that we prefer, we're seeing. What we do is we do a end of standard, you know, how many employees do we have per residence, per thousand residents? And that's kind of what people do as a benchmark. And so over time, we're saying we've gone basically from eight point two one employees for every thousand residents we have to right around seven point one. So even as the city has grown, uh, our staffing is basically, I mean, to stay pretty much statistically even, um, for the most part, uh, between eight and seven, um, over that period of time. And then we benchmark ourselves against other communities, the statistically like us, from a population standpoint. And so we did Forest Park, City Griffin, Union City, Cornus and, and Carrollton. And so where we are in terms of a number of residents per thousand employee, I mean, number of employees per thousand residents, right at seven. Um, as compared to Forest Park, they had eight point three, uh, City Griffin, and, and, and that's inflated, I tell you why. Um, and then we strip away, they have an electric utility, so they run their own power company. But when you take out their power company staff, they're still right around ten, um, employees per thousand residents, even when you strip away the, the, the cost for associated with their utility. Uh, Union City, and this is now the new Union City, not the old Union City, cause you know, they operated a, a jam facility. This is taken into account, they're new, they're eight point four. The City of Cornus, there's pretty much fifteen thousand people, um, they're thirteen point six. And next one statistically to us in terms of, of, of population size and level of service is, is Calmington and they're twelve.
That says Carrollton.
Carrollton, excuse me. Um, let me talk about the general fund, I kind of like to show you guys the history and progression, so you actually will see it's picking up some. Um, this year is a somewhat of a, a year-end recondition, so twenty-ten, twenty-eleven was not a whole year budget for us. That was basically a half year because we switched from the calendar year budget to a fiscal year budget. Um, but that's how you're seeing the progression in the budget over, over the last, um, six, seven years, uh, in terms of whatever we're projecting today at twelve point four. You know, part of the budget process is how do we establish what our military rate should be? Um, state law and our base, this is the process we go by. And when we take our numbers and, and apply them to that formula that the state gives us, they're basically saying, this is the budget that should be to sustain our operation of twelve point four million dollars. Uh, and four point, four point five nine, um, right now we're currently at four point three eight seven. And we'll break that down a little bit more for you. And this give you the history of our military, or, excuse me. Military over time, uh, where we've been pretty much, um, declining, um, well, in terms of the military, just on the fact that we're, we're rolling back the military. Obviously to sustain our twelve point four million, this is what we're saying, the military, we're saying military rate should be set at, which is four point five, and then that classified under the law as an actual increase. So that would mean to be, not to advertise that, that process. And you guys have seen this before and we've updated it slightly based on the numbers, the new digest for this, uh, military hasn't been set yet, uh, but this is taken in last year's. And so when we talk about where your tax dollar, that, that's an individual dollar, if you were to break it down from that level, where does that, how does that dollar shake out in terms of who gets what on my dollar? Um, so yes, school board, board of education, you get about fifty-seven percent of your, your dollar, seven, fifty-seven cents on your dollar goes to the school board. Uh, for those folks who are sixty-five and older, I think there's a little rebate built in there for y'all, so you don't have to pay a lot. I had small folks my age to have to pay because I still have school-aged children. Uh, so yes, we, that's what we, we present us go to the school board. The next big taxing entity in Henry County is Henry County. Um, at twenty-seven doll, twenty-seven cents on your dollar basically go to them. We're right around ten to eleven doll, eleven cents on the dollar. Um, the state is declining, ever declining, I think that's on purpose. Um, but, and they don't rely on property tax to, to fund state operations. But that's basically what your tax dogs look like. So every time somebody think that the city is increasing the tax rate, realize the county level on there is a couple of times over the last two, three runs of cycles. Um, the school board, then they're maxed out, the only way they can go in the eyes to go through state legislation to go above the twenty mils to. Um the school board, then they're maxed out. The only way they can go in the eyes to go through state legislation to go above the twenty mils that they come to act. The county right now is selling eleven, eleven mils and that's taking in the robot, which is different. If you're an unincorporated county, you're paying somewhere around fifteen mils. Because we provide planning, zoning and police services, there's a, they they reduce that number on what we pay on the county side just because we don't duplication of services. Um they take that that factor out. So we don't typically pay the same amount as a county, unincorporated county resident. We pay slightly more. Uh and you'll see that when we break it out. When we talk about total wide city all funds, um this is where we've been over the last uh. Seven, eight years in terms of the overall budget, general fund plus all of our special funds and enterprise funds. And as you see, we were going down. That was, for the most part, that was your SPOS three money winding down um out of the system. Uh and now we no longer collect SPOS three funds. We still have some legacy funds left, but we're not collecting that. So we don't budget for that increase. But you're now seeing SPOS four come online and we're writing, we're writing right about two point eight million dollars for SPOS. We're we're being averaging, they'd be right around two hundred and thirty to two hundred and thirty five, two hundred and forty thousand dollars a month. Correct me if I'm wrong, a little higher than that? Okay, somewhere in that area. Uh and so using those statistics, we can, can we collect in SPOS? So that's why you're now seeing that progressing back there. And over time, we do mine itself right on my out of the system. Um and so what does it look like? When we look at general fund versus all the other funds in the budget. Um our water sewer fund is pretty much the majority of our budget. They're our biggest entity and our biggest uh revenue collector. Uh at four point three million dollars. Um here comes your SPOS money uh in terms of what they collect from SPOS. Um SPOS four, uh SPOS four, um SPOS three revenues is still sitting in there and that's where that's captured. Uh in terms of SPOS, we get stormwater. Some people call it rain dots. If we touch it because waterfall and you're roof on your dots, we. Try to give a couple of dollars for us to be able to effectively collect it and manage it in a way. Um uh that's what some people call it right at seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Um we also, we we have sanitation here, but we also with with a private firm um to provide that services to our residents and that's what they did in one point three million dollars. Um and hotel motel is right at the end. And so we've seen a huge increase in our hotel motel. We just, we basically almost talked a hundred thousand. About eight, almost ninety thousand a month ago, eighty thousand dollars in collection. Um that's, that's a lot in hotel motel.
What month was that?
That was last month, March, March. Uh and as you know, we, the city of McDonough, all the nice hotels in Henry County over in our uh district. Um so we collect a lot of hotel motel. Kind of the ideal, when we did hotel motel funds were collected in my old, old job. City Griffin gets sixty eight thousand dollars off of hotel motel. That's what we're giving. So it's a huge difference. Obviously, we've got the interstate, make a big difference. And we've got new hotels coming online. Um so we'll start to see some more of that. But also generates that is something that the previous presenter uh presenter talked about, um uh hospital, hospital tourism and hospitality association. Uh that entity basically, you know, they try to drum up folks coming and what they have a goal is heads and beds in place, faces in places. You know, part of what they do facilitates us getting that revenue. But I'll tell you, one of the hidden gems is Henry County Chamber of Commerce. Um a lot of our major sporting events, we, my son played baseball and he played soccer. We had a beach tournament, over a hundred teams in Henry County. Um those folks stayed in our hotels. Uh we have two big major baseball. We have still one um Nascar event this year. But we have minimum Nascar events, trucking, uh smaller cars than than even here people come to. Those folks are obviously in our hotels on the highway twenty uh corner. You know, major capital improvements we see for this year. Um obviously, uh one of them was is our courthouse. We hope that that when I talk a little bit about that, it will be well. Um that project coming online, that was part of SPOS three in terms of purchasing the property. With SPOS three was oh seven, oh eight. The planning of the actual referendum to purchase the property. Um so you're talking about this being a priority of mayor, council and the citizens approved that some years back. Um one of the goals, you know, part of that public safety complex was police and court. Um we've done that with the police department, they have a new facility. Um and so now they're sentenced to move into the court and get that done. Um one of the major priorities we're working on obviously is the the previous property that was purchased for the police department and when I came on board um in twenty twelve. And driving around with some of our council members with Noddy and um Mr. Smith at the time, which was, you know, I saw a vacant building and I asked why are we building? A public safety complex surrounded by dead people. It didn't make any sense when we had a wonderful symbiotic relationship with Henry County court system sitting right here. And an opportunity to be a part of that system. Not only that, a major part of the cost of the court facility was the parking and the stormwater. Um and guess what you have right across the street from where this facility is? You have a two story underutilized parking there. Go there now or during the middle of the day and there probably five or six cars parked. You know, how do we facilitate the total use of that property? Well, we don't want to build parking as part of this process. The parking's right across the street. Uh and so that was one of the things that helped us look to move in court to that uh facility.
Also the needed expansion of us public cemetery.
Correct. And and out of that comes the cemetery expansion and and the potential for us to to have a win for them. I talked to a. A finance guy and we were talking about the court and he said, wow, that's a wonderful opportunity for the city. The city's able to make that 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 uh cemetery happen. Uh major capital is obviously the purchase of our software, our service systems and desktop computers. Uh and then we have a number of initiatives under the public works. I think we've got a couple of vehicles in public works that need to be purchased underneath there. And I'll break that down again. Um also at our next meeting for you guys. Um looking forward, um you know, we still see commercial development happening in this, in the city. Our residential development is ticking up. Um and those are just a number of developments that are out there, but we know that they're all. Um but also when we talk about public safety and and public works, um you know, part of the issue with our public works, at some point, we're gonna be bringing online two parks. Um two major parks. One will come online hopefully pretty soon within the calendar year. Um the other one will probably be on board before the end of the next SPOS, an an extension of an existing park. And so at some point, we got out of discussion about level of servicing and frank discussion. Uh about what level of service we want to provide to our existing residents or our new residents who they're not being yet out long, but also for the ones we know don't come. Okay? Because being in Henry County for the last fourteen years, I know some of y'all have been here a long time. A lot of folks was hoping we wouldn't be two hundred thousand people, but guess what? We are. Uh and now those folks are having a hard time moving around the county and hence one big pain system because we've grown. Uh we're continuing to grow. All you have to do is drive us to the other right there, Jonesboro Road and interstate to look over in the corner. And if you were looking a year ago, you didn't see any rooftops. Go there now. Uh they're continuing to build. Um so people are continuing to come to Henry County. We weren't able to erect the fence on high, on the interstate to stop them. So they're continuing to come. And so how do we really, really plan for these folks to come and be residents of new residents of McDonough and Henry County? Um water is gonna be a huge issue with that. That's gonna be a huge thing for us. Um and our reservoir is gonna need some work down the road and that's gonna be a major capital for us. I want to keep these things on your screen as we talk um into the next year and into the future. You know, the need to truly strategically time for this community moving forward over the next five, over the next fifteen, over the next ten, twenty years. Um because what we do today determines whether or not our future residents are gonna be married in gridlock. And how are you gonna help the facilities necessary to provide for the head children to enjoy the life that we're enjoying right now in terms of facilities? That's something we need to have frank discussion about. Um last, one of the things I want to talk about is is the alternative. At one of our budget meetings, um. They were, we were asked to go back and look at how do we, how to address that? So what we've done and you guys have a part of your pocket is how do we get to that point? Um and we've gone through a number of scenarios. Well, initially, we said, let's keep police fund, police and fire and four police officers, four firefighters. Um obviously, over the last couple, over the last month and working out scenarios and other discussions with you guys, we basically said, okay. You know, well, well, what's the best scenario for us to go out at this point in time and talking to the chiefs? You know, we basically said, let's go with this scenario, which is to keep the four requested firefighters and I'll tell you why and I'll show you why. Um and and chief said, please keep Archie deals and additional officer. That is fine. Um but there's gonna be some impairment for both of these entities in the future and something that needs to be addressed. And I've asked them to have conversations with y'all as well because we are the lowest paid public safety entity in Henry County. I would say again, Hampton, Locust Grove, Henry County pay more starting salary for their public safety folks than we do. Okay? So when we're talking about trying to attract the best and invite us out here in terms of police officers and firefighters. We have a built in impairment because we don't send folks to the county. Um so we hire certified officers and if that certified officer can start in Henry County at thirty six or thirty eight at Hampton, place somewhere around there. We're starting thirty four, thirty two? So, you know, there's some built in issues that, you know, hopefully we need to address and come in here to help. I mean, and and we'll work to to give you some guys, uh some avenues there to hopefully be neutral on 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 additional revenues. I think it's workable and and the chief and I, chief and I will work together. I think that happens for you guys. Um but one of the things we did to fund that is to look at, how do we get that? And one of the things we said was, okay, uh we looked at our military rate to get, to gain that revenue. Uh and so what we presented to you guys was a scenario of military increase. To do the four officers and four firefighters would have made, would have had to help us increase the military to five point seven mils from four point three. That wasn't something that we thought was tangible. You guys didn't think it was to you. Um and so we pared it down, what it would be in four firefighters and three police officers. And public, public works had a request in there. Um because we have keeping parks and because we have keeping the new railway three miles on Jonesboro Road. It'll be turning into ours pretty soon and probably within this budget, you will be able to maintain that. Um we'll find a way to do it. Uh but we know that at some point, they're gonna need an hour just to address those new upcoming costs. Uh but right now, our deal was highly public, public safety focused. And so we got to the one police officer. This chief said, I still got to fill, I think, one or two, two positions, chief? Three positions um that we still have to fill. So one could suffice us for now, but the firefighters is important and I'm gonna tell you why. Um one of the things that chief uh Morgan did some years ago was got us a ISO rating of four. Um and with the help of uh Councilman Alarod, who's in the insurance business, was able to kind of show us what that ISO rating means to a home, unto a business, but we capture homeowners specifically. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, the 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 savings is even more on the, on the, on business side, on the safety.
It'll be more only for the fact that those premiums are typically higher anyway.
Correct.
So it it should be, but each individual would be different.
Different. And so what we did was we ran the scenario of what that would look like in terms of of, you know, what what would take to sustain this? And what would it do was basically moving the military to right around four point nine mils and I'll show you what that means to individual homeowner.
Why are you doing that? Chief, do you know how long it takes to go through that process again, uh in some process?
Well, we have to, we can call for a study and then they put us on the list. And the study's a little different now than it used to be. It used to take two days. It'll take an hour. It takes about two hours.
Okay. And do you get the results back fairly quickly?
Uh yes, sir.
So in essence, when we talk about if we move in, the current military rate is right here. And I I just captured city taxes, but if y'all ask, I can show y'all what that means. Overall, city, county, school board, state tax, I can show you that that's in here. Um but so when we look at this scenario of of value for them, the median house in Henry County is in the city of McDonough is right around. A hundred and nineteen, hundred and twenty thousand is the median house uh price in Henry County, in McDonough. Um how do they calculate your tax, tax one oh one, your praise value? You don't get it on all your praise values, it's on your sass value, which is. Basically forty percent of whatever your praise value is, is what you're typically taxed on. And at four point three mils, that person that owns a home that's right around a hundred thousand is paying about a hundred and seventy five dollars in property tax to the city. Um and as we talked about, if we propose moving to pay for public safety, the four firefighters, police officers in court. Um to four point nine, their taxes will increase by um twenty four dollars to one ninety nine. And for a house of a hundred and fifty, they'll go from two sixty three to two ninety nine. That's a thirty six dollar increase. For houses two hundred and fifty, uh they'll go from four thirty eight to four ninety nine, sixty one dollar increase. And for houses three hundred and fifty thousand, they'll go from um six hundred and fourteen to six ninety nine, um when you apply the military to them. Um what does that difference mean between this and that? Would they pay on an annual basis? Uh twenty four dollars for a house that's a hundred and fifty, thirty six dollars for a house that's a hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifty, sixty one, eighty five dollars. Um as chief says, if we get those additional firefighters, and the reason why we stuck with the firefighters is because we have to potentially move our ISO rating from four to three. Uh the last time we did the study, I think mind power was one of the things that that we got knocked on. Um and we have good water, we have more pool water, which is one of the other aspects they look at. So the mind power. So what does that mean to be out those four firefighters? You're now looking at ISO, uh uh ISO rating going from a four to a three. Basically, what that means is that your homeowners insurance would go, would be reduced by twenty one dollars. And that will vary depending on your policy, but for the most part, right around there. So your annual increase in terms of property taxes, three dollars and forty cents. What does that mean, three dollars and forty cents on an annual basis? What does that mean on a monthly basis? Because, you know, I get paid on the month. That's twenty eight cents a month. It's less than a can of Coke. Um but that's what it is in breakdown. And if you did it by the week, it would be seven cents a week. Um in terms of what that increase would be. So overall, a house is three hundred and fifty thousand, which we don't have many of, but we do have some. Um with the savings on the ISO, their tax would be on a, on an annual basis, twelve dollars. On a monthly basis, a dollar and three cents is what their increase would be on a month. If they had to pay on a monthly basis their taxes every month. That's what they would pay in order to get to that number in twelve months. Um and so with that, we said, well, if if the council feels that this is a priority for us to address, and I'll say this too. One of the things I saw when I got here, a- especially as it relates to fire and the discussions with the county, was that the county comes and saves us on fire. If there's a fire, they touted that ad nauseam in order to get six hundred and something thousand dollars back to the county from city residents. Um and my chief said, that's not the case. But one of the things we do help in this community, when you talk about fire safety. Is I have a fire station that have two pump trucks technically to sit in there. And I give you an example, if one oh one Lawrenceville Street was to catch a fire, no, a medical call and fifty Lawrenceville Street. Was to happen right now, that fire truck leave fire station fifty one and drive over there to fifty Lawrenceville Street to find out what's going on with that resident. And lo and behold, there's a fire at eighty eight Keysbury Street, which is the fire truck apartment. Guess what? That fire department is effectively shut down. Why? I don't have the mind power. I have a truck that's there, it's full of water. I don't have the mind power to drive that truck to fight the fire right there at the fire department. So my team at the house across the street, it, one or two stone street was to catch a fire. Whilst he's over there dealing with a hot attack or a senior citizen or somebody else, I've gotta wait for fire station one. In the county to come from basically where Obie's barbecue is, to come from that location to come save you. Right up, he comes screaming out industrial and he'll come screaming out onto twenty eighty one and he'll come past. Uh Phillips Drive and guess what? Then he pulls up at a railroad, there's a train. So now he's got a call dispatch and he's got to ask for some other fire department to come and interject to come save you. So guess where he's coming from? Up on one fifty five, down there near uh, what's the nearest intersection of the north of Camp Brown Road. That's the nearest fire truck station that's gonna come to save you over here. Okay, across the street. That's not an effective way to provide public safety to our residents, just to be honest with you. And if the cost is twenty eight dollars, twenty eight cents a month, three dollars, if the residents say, I don't wanna do that, that's fine. But understand what that comes with. We don't have, we have to, we have the facility, we have the equipment, we don't have the mind power. Uh and so I've charged the chief, how do we make these improvements? And by making that improvement, you're seeing some savings. It's not that we're charging you twenty four dollars a month in property tax. But you're seeing an improvement because it also comes with a somewhat of a rebate, um as we able to increase the sort of the ISO rating for us, which is a benchmark. Um so if 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 the county and council feel that that's the way we wanna go to provide up, to start to put us on the footing of helping a true all around fire department. To provide that multiple event interdiction, this is the way we do it. Um and so if if main council wants us to go in that direction, um what does that mean to the general fund budget? That means our general fund budget goes from two point, from twelve point four to twelve point nine because we're basically factoring in that cost for the, for the firefighters, the police and, and, uh, and our court facility. And I tell you, police is still an entity that's also needing some help and some, and, and I've charged chief, you know, at some point, how do we, how do we truly look at providing even public safety? Because we continue to grow. Uh, one of the things we did in January is I took main council for a drive of the city. And it wasn't just a small circle, remember? We had to drive from the northern part of the city up there off of Turner Church Road all the way down one fifty-five and with the little bike post that pops around. Number down Parkway on the other side, um, where Crown is.
Arden.
Or West Ridge.
West Ridge.
West Ridge Parkway, that's how far south we are from this point. And so you've gotta be at your residential development that's now being constructed and pulling permits every month. And at some point, we gotta provide public safety to those folks. At the same level, we provide the public safety to folks that live right across the street. Uh, and so how do we address that as a continually growing community? Uh, we'll do creative ways, but we still need to look at how do we get our mind power where it needs to be for a city to, as I told main council, and you might not like it, but if we start rezoning every property, if we start rezoning right now in the city of McDonough and we only allow them to build what's already currently zoned, where we, where we at? Here we go, under there? Close to forty-nine people. That's what I'm doing, one more piece of property. That's what's already on the ground. And if you think I'm joking, go on Google Earth and put in McDonough and look at all the subdivisions that are just partially built that are sitting there right for development. And when you talk about a lot that would have sold for twenty-eight thousand dollars with water, sewer, light there, it's now seven for five and seven, or hard silver for seven and seven. So somebody needs it, somebody's gonna build it, it's only a matter of time. Uh, and so how do we provide those adequate public safety stuff? One of the recommendations we said, if the main council want to fund public safety at this level, um, that's the increase we need to get there and we recommend that. And if main council vote to go for us to do that, we'll adjust the budget document to reflect, um, moving from this, from four, twelve point four to twelve point nine. And then do the legal advertisement, uh, pull out to show that reflective increase in, in the military from four point three to four point.
Any questions back out to you?
So where we are, that five hundred and fifty thousand is the gap that we, if we want to dig up the firefighter, police, court, that's the gap we gotta make up? And, and, and we can't find that in the budget that we're in now?
Um, you know, one of the charges that we look at, uh, and, and you guys got my memo, my letter, uh, was they asked us to look at cutting the budget by five hundred and travel training and all of that was looked at. And basically when I showed you what travel and training was, that didn't make the cut. Um, so you're basically, you're gonna go, you're gonna go into somebody's operations. And whose operations are you gonna go into to find that additional four hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars? To make that happen? Um, you know, like I said, we started the budget process in the department heads. I- if y'all want to, you're free to ask them. And what they requested of us in this budget process would be cut from the budget process to get it to this point. Um, I know that you cannot got number and everybody's going, the city's budget is growing, but you also have to be reflective of the cost of providing services and getting G-bus, getting expensive. Um, but we also a growing community, we're with the county, I would say, yeah. I don't need these people because I could cut for these, so I could cut all the other stuff we're doing because we're a declining population. We're not. Um, we're a continuing growing population. And so how to read, once again, a frank discussion about what level of service we wanna provide to these folks. Um, and so as a major discussion, we, you know, we entered in that discussion as part of this process and, and probably have to continue moving forward.
If there are not any questions, I, I, okay.
Insurance went up almost two hundred thousand. When you look at group and has it been quoted in the last few years to see if we're still getting the competitive rate?
We are, we changed brokers last year. It was a really good, actually really good savings. We've actually seen some increases, but part of that is when we have an employee that uses the primary care, the, the hospital or, uh, uh, emergency room with the primary care doctor, that kinda impacts your costs. I mean, the more times we hit our insurance, obviously they look at events, um, and that, as we event, hobbies, um...
So it was quoted out last year.
Yeah, we get a quote and that quote is usually, I think, uh, HR will tell you they get it somewhere around November. She, she, I mean, she gets a million around that time. She, she'll work and, and call us work diligently with our insurance folks to bring down our costs. And as you know, last year we went from, we went to Coventry, which was offering, offering us a good deal, but at the same time, we found out, even though other communities rented them, I don't think they were best for us. And a lot of us in the middle that had some issues with them, will be able to go back and negotiate with Blue Cross Blue Shields. Uh, and she continued to go through this process for them and negotiate them. And our broker works on our behalf as well as part of that process.
Um, I'd like to move forward then with, uh, the public hearing, I'd like to open the public hearing. Those that would like to speak in favor of the budget are, are welcome to the podium. Um, chief, if we need to, we can move the podium out for speakers. All those that would like to speak in favor of the budget are welcome to the podium. Will you please state your name?
My name's Fred Collins, I'm a resident of forty-twenty Anastasia in McDonough. Uh, I think my comments are not necessarily gonna be a hundred percent for the budget, no, a hundred percent against the budget that is proposed. Uh, my compliments to, um, administrator and, and, and the department heads for the hard work they've done up to this point on getting the budget to where it is right now. As far as the four firefighters, there's absolutely no question in my mind or anyone that I've ever talked to that knows the situation, that we need to add additional firefighters. I know firsthand, I was at the firehouse to own some business, uh, a couple of months ago. And I walked into the firehouse, there was nobody there. Radios were operating, I heard some conversation, I looked around, went in every room, nobody was there, so I waited a while. The fire truck came in and both of the employees were on the fire truck. And, and I said, you know, what's the deal, man, where was everybody? Well, we only have two people on, on staff here, we were out on a, uh, on an emergency call. And I thought then, what would have happened if my house caught fire while they were out? And it would, it would have been disastrous, waiting for a fire truck to come from the county or some other fire, uh, firehouse. So I, I'm totally for adding staff to, uh, to, to protect the citizens. What I have a problem with is the justification as far as improving our protection class. Uh, I, I know when we, when we get up to staff, there's a process where the chief is gonna have to go and apply for ISO, uh, 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 rating improvement. That is, uh, you know, go, that's not guaranteed. Just because you add to staff doesn't, it's not gonna guarantee you, he's gonna get that rating. Uh, and even if he does, it's not a guarantee that my insurance rates are gonna come down. I mean, I've done a little research on this in, in the last couple of days and it, it's a possibility and it's a great possibility. But it's not a guarantee. So I don't think we can use the chart that we just shown as a way to pay for that. I don't. Now, I think we need to do it, but I think we need to take one more look at expenditures. One example, it just was so clear tonight when the hospitality and tourism made their presentation. He talked about what they were doing, what the main street, uh, program was doing, what the chamber was doing and the work the downtown development, development authority was doing. And there was some overlaps there. I don't see why we can't do some combinations, some, some, uh, working together. Maybe eliminating a staff position or two, maybe even taking a, uh, employee from the main street program or the hospitality tourism board, uh, inserting them onto the, uh, Henry County Chamber of Commerce as a paid staff to look after, uh, city of McDonough, uh, Chamber of Commerce type issues. That's just, like, just came up, you know, out of the blue, off the top of my head. But I think that we can go back and look at some of the non-essential services that we're providing and look at the staffing there and look at the, uh, the funding that they're getting and see if we can't cut this just a little bit more. But as far as increasing firefighters, uh, I think that's absolutely a no-brainer. And we need to do it, we just need to look, take one more look at how we're gonna fund that. Thank you very much, you're doing a good job and I appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
We elected smart people to handle tough, uh, jobs and they hired smart staff. And I'm confident that we'll get this done. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Collins. Anyone else like to speak in favor? Then I'd like to, uh, close the, that part of the public hearing and ask for those who are against or would like to speak against the, uh, proposed budget. Anyone in the audience like to speak, um, against the proposed budget? Hearing none, I will move that, uh, to close the public hearing and move forward then to item number ten. Discussion and determination of SPOSS projects for bond, uh, funded.
Let's go on. We'll get this back again. Please come to the presidential for a quick minute. Um, my other Mr. Attorney. Um, real quick, you know, SPOSS discussion started, um, back last year. Um, probably the year before and after I first came on board, um, we eventually lost. And then managed SPOSS, uh, discussions and followed afterwards. We, we worked with the county to come up with a cost sharing, um, and our other system municipalities and cost sharing. But then we got to the point that once we got those down, we had to facilitate the, uh, prior, our projects for SPOSS pool, uh, which will, uh, run this over the next six years. Uh, that was approved by our holders, uh, back in November. Um, prior to that, we basically came up with a list after we determined that our overall, uh, revenues for the city as it relates to, to SPOSS funds, uh, working with the county, our share of it would be roughly right around twenty-two, uh, point nine million dollars. Um, and so from that, we developed a list based on some character, uh, specialty areas. Um, and that list is broken up in June, you might have done in logic, Ron. There you go, and just move it up and down as we go through. Um, the, the chart that you're seeing now is the list that basically is our bonded list of SPOSS projects. Um, because we're able to pare down what our priority projects are gonna be, um, from the initial twenty-two point nine million dollars to down to seven point oh-six million dollars in terms of project. And that number was structured based on our percentage share of what, what we could bond as part of overall. Uh, so what we did was we said, here are our major projects. Um, uh, Phase Two of Ollons Under Park, where it's at least at, uh, one point three million dollars. Uh, cemetery expansion, um, at five hundred thousand. Uh, Jonesboro Road park improvements at five hundred and thirty-five thousand. Uh, and then on the public safety, we said, we wanted to, one of the key projects that's upcoming that obviously is a new addition back is the upgrade of our radio systems. Um, and that was a part of the radio system going to eight hundred megahertz. Um, we're not going beyond the eight hundred megahertz range, uh, in terms of our radio systems and new homeland security requirements, they had to be on the same system. So in the event of another major emergency, we don't see some of the defective Mr. Resol under nine eleven. So everybody's gotta be able to communicate to each other, effectively deal with emergency management issues. So, um, part of that upgrade, our cost of that upgrade of the radio systems was six hundred and twenty-eight, twenty-four thousand dollars in our share of that radio system upgrade. Um, the Henry County out of the line share of it and then our jurisdictions, based on our population share, are the same. And I think we all decided to actually fund that radio system through this loss that was voted on. Uh, IT infrastructure was discussed, um, and we put five hundred thousand towards that, um, to get that system up to where it needs to be. Um, the fire trucks, the purchase two new pumpers, as we explained to you guys during the whole SPOSS negotiation. How old is our pump trucks, chief?
Uh, the old, um, coming up to be twenty years that were replaced and the other will be seventeen.
And the nice car of a fire truck is right around, what, twelve, fifteen years?
Fire truck, right, a bumper truck, around ten years.
Ten years. And so at that point, we'll get some, we'll get a return, I think we got an offer for one of them already, hopefully, I think. So hopefully we give a little return, uh, if we get rid of them, uh, one or two of them. Um, but that, we, we decided to go ahead and, and priority fund the fire trucks, um, at seven hundred. And I think chief has already got some good quotes to get us there. Um, then the road improvements, we talked about, um, uh, repaving, uh, uh, two quarters of the middle at seven hundred and fifty thousand. Um, Phillips Drive, continuing that process, which we stopped with, with, uh, Stonewall funds to be reimbursed by, to, to, to SPOSS, uh, one point two million. Um, McDonough Parkway, as you know, McDonough Parkway, there's another section of McDonough Parkway, two sections that need to be addressed. Uh, the McDonough Parkway, if this would do, uh, put our share in the county also, this is a priority. Um, and then Veterans Drive, we looked at, uh, McGary Road, excuse me, I hesitated with me. Veterans Drive, um, paving improvements at a hundred thousand. So that came in right around two point eight million dollars for roads, one point eight million for public safety and parks at two point three million. Um, and that made up the seven, seven million, um, sixty-two dollars and five hundred bucks. Uh, one of the things, you know, we've been asked by attorney, our representative attorney is to, you know, make sure that our list is ironclad to submit to them, that the county's not going to bond finance. And that was the reason why we put it down, this, 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 the priority, I asked those projects to bond finance in the head of the SPOSS collection. Um, Henry County is a little late getting off the gun, they've been looking at November. Um, and so at that point, we wanted to include these projects, but I wanted us to make an amendment to this project, to this list. Um, specifically because they're late in the process for the bond financing, we're starting collecting, uh, SPOSS revenues. Uh, April, it'll be probably directed, you know, at the end of this month, I think it is. Already got it. Already got that thing, I mean. Um, and so one of the names that we discussed was to go ahead and move forward with our IT and to move forward with our cemetery to get that off the ground and constructed, utilizing these, the, the incoming funds now. And so the move was, cause we think we could get them done without, without leaving one of the priorities. So we potentially do it before the priority, this is through the bonding process. Um, to remove that five hundred thousand for the cemetery and the IT, um, the five hundred, um, five hundred thousand out of, out of that, out of that process. Um, which will bring our, uh, total SPOSS bonded down from seven point oh-six two million to six point oh-two, only six, oh-six two million. Uh, and to get that approved by y'all to go ahead and do that. Uh, and then I know there was, um, um, there was some discussion about maybe looking at standard seven million, but adding some of the, uh, two other projects from the whole, from the overall list, back onto the bonded fund list, but to stay basically at that seven million. So what other priority projects could be pulled off there to get done? Um, and, uh, I don't know, we all wanted to do that discussion because we're down three people.
We're down three people, but, um, uh...
But I think everybody would agree to move that list down, because we can get those projects moving, that's pretty normal. I think everybody would support that.
Right, and, and I would like everybody to think in terms of having some money available for intersection improvements. Because we may need to move from, uh, and that's something that I think our attorney can help us, because we had, um... We had money in for roundabouts and I know that the, uh, whatever's gonna happen at, um, on Jonesboro Road is gonna have to...
on Jonesboro Road is gonna have to happen, we're gonna have to have a real plan in place, right way, uh, with DOT as to what we really are or aren't going to do there and how that's going to work for us to be able to get our entrance to a park and have it a working entrance.
And I, I have a comment. I don't, I don't know what process we'll use, uh, in terms on, of, of actually making the decision, but, um, there have been some ongoing discussions regarding cultural, recreational or, or historical, um, facilities and currently we don't have any allocations in, in that area. Um, there are some opportunities that, that are out there and the plans aren't ready to come board yet, but I would like for us to look at the possibility of reallocating, uh, some funds in those areas. We understand that we have to be at least shovel-ready and I think through these partnerships, that's exactly where we would be. And this other issue, uh, involves street improvements and that's the whole notion that, uh, Jonesboro Road, a portion of it is, is severely impaired as it relates to sidewalks. I've received a number of, of, I'm gonna call them what they are, complaints. And I guess it's become more apparent now because the kids are out of school. But, uh, several parents have expressed concern about the area just beyond the railroad track because folks actually have to...
Heavy foot traffic all the time.
They have to walk down into the ditch in order to get into the square. And it's a problem with them walking in the ditch as well as a problem with them walking on, on, on the right way because I don't even know if that's a legal right way because the, the width is, is so small, but, um...
On Jonesboro Street and Jonesboro Road, on both sides of the railroad track.
It merges.
It's very, very dangerous and it's a lot of heavy foot traffic.
We're talking about that area basically from Oak Street go back towards Doris.
Yes, yes. And it's, I mean, heavy traffic.
Only, only thing I've worked on that area is, is giving a lot of work and then it getting torn up with the one-way pairs construction.
Well, I think we might have to have conversations.
We do have sidewalks. They do have sidewalks planned because I know that on, on, uh, the north side, there's a full sidewalk that connects in and supposedly on the south side of the street there is. And there's supposed to be, uh, additional on Jonesboro Street, but we need to look at what we could do to help people out, you know, between now and then and with that construction going on. That's another reason why we need to look heavily at, uh, especially for Marion's Way and for Toby Springs there, the residents there, because with the construction, um, that's got to be addressed on how they can get in and out and, um, you know, safely.
And when we look at the demographics of, of our community in, in, in terms of socioeconomics, there's a lot of foot traffic over there because a lot of folks don't have cars. And so it continuously puts, uh, individuals in, in a, in a situation where they have safety concerns. Some of the kids are walking to school and I don't know where all they're walking, but I did observe some folks down in the ditch and it was, it was just very, very concerning. The first, uh, time I started getting complaints was around spring break and then I started getting a couple of messages here recently and I just figured it was because the kids are out of school.
Well, it is continuous foot traffic and it is just as heavy on the weekends as it is during the week. And the children, uh, lots of times, uh, you know, want to get off and now that we have a McDonald's and what have you, that's increased the foot traffic. It is because it gives them away and a lot of their parents work and it's a good way for them to go and have a reasonable, um, priced meal. And I mean, that's what they're using it for, cause a lot of them, um, stop by and say hello to me, you know, on their way to and from. So anyway, um, that's what's going on.
I didn't make that connection, but it was like, we talked about it over the years, but it's like all of a sudden people are just coming out.
But it is.
Yeah. That makes, that makes sense.
Different neighborhoods.
Yes. And, uh, but it's dangerous there. That section is just dangerous for everybody. Everybody concerned, including the drivers, you know, and when you have bad weather and people are trying not to slide down into a deep ditch or whatever.
They're motionless.
And, no, there's no sho, no shoulder. And then after you cross the railroad track, while there is space there, you often see people trying not to hit someone in the rear end when there's bad weather and the train and everything else that happens and they're sliding off, cause we personally lost two, uh, pets by pa, uh, by, uh, cars veering off and hitting them.
Well, I guess next question is how much do we need to look at allocation? And I, I know we don't have that answer tonight, but is that something we can ballpark on?
Yeah, what I'll do, um...
Cause we're basically taking a million off.
Yeah, I would actually be, you know, I think it's fine. I think everybody would be in agreement to, to reduce the, the bonded list. I, I don't think the demand would be against that or part of two of the council members. I think they're pretty much, I think there's some, um, consensus around that. I would start there.
Yeah.
And then basically, basically look, let us look at, you know, specifically address some of those pro, those specific projects you all talked about, put on there and then see what that number, add those numbers in, into, into them.
But once again, they are scheduled within the one-way pairs, but what do we do for the citizens in the meantime? In the interim? Cause you're talking about four years before construction begins and that, and increased traffic.
Yeah, in one sense, Ms. Garland, excuse me.
That's all right.
And, and in one sense, some, you know, the thing over here says it'd be best to provide that service to them now and I'm sitting over here saying, is, is, you're gonna do that at a cost and it's gonna get torn up because they're even painful? And so are you putting money, good money into a situation to have it come back and torn up and redone again? Just in the life of your time?
Is there some type of stopgap measure that we could put in place out of those structures? A bridge? I don't...
Well, the problem that, the, I want, and I just, the, the area, there's Toby Springs in that area right there. The problem is, you know, you've got a culvert, I think, that goes up underneath there. So you'd have to major remade to do that culvert to put enough dirt to backfill that, that's solid enough that it won't roll away, that it provide them just a, a footpath, four feet wide to provide that path, but you gotta do that.
It's major construction.
You, you're talking about a major undertaking and I don't, Key, I don't know if you wanna talk to that, but speak a little bit more to that. But you're talking about basically, one, you just can't leave the culvert underneath. You'd have to basically expand that culvert, the length of whatever expansion you're putting in there. And that means having to redo that part, that culvert, that's a cost that's gonna be...
And then they're gonna tear it out when they do it.
And they're gonna come back and tear it all back out in three, four years.
But in terms of, of, of putting some type, and I don't know, I'm not asking to plan this here today, but are there any key, any opportunities for something creative like a foot bridge? I mean, that provide, and I'm not visually looking at it right now. I don't know what the whole stretch looks like, but just some, you wouldn't have to do any type of, uh, infrastructure relative to, to stormwater drainage or any of that, but just a bridge that would transport folks, uh, pedestrians from one point to the other.
We, we've looked at it and measured out the span and just see if there's some, you know, some, some things that we can use for that without having to, like you said, redo everything down below, uh, and just see what's out there and what's made it.
There's also...
I'm sorry, uh, I'm sorry, I'm ten. I'm kinda thinking about something similar to what we have out at Alexander Park, uh, relative to the, the actual bridge, maybe even, I don't know, maybe we could get some of the volunteers.
But that would be temporary.
Correct.
In, in a SPOSS, can we use SPOSS money for temporary items?
It, 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 tend to be, you're, you're, you're addressing the intent of the SPOSS by it, it, it part of that is a room improvement to put sidewalks there, you know, that...
That's a question, I think the diff, there's a difference between can you and should you?
Should you, yeah.
And I ask you, cause it's gonna be torn up. And I, I'd hate to spend this, I mean, I wanna do something for them, but I don't wanna do something for four years and it's torn up.
Well, uh, 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 if we could, if we could, y'all allow us to quickly, before we have our next call, we need to look at, I think the, the foot bridge that's over there in the Alexander Park, a situation like that, can we build that, what the cost would be? And can we do that legally? Can we pay for that out of SPOSS as a, as a roadway improvement?
It might be on the Marion's Way side because the sidewalk does come down that way.
Yeah. But, you know, can we, can we actually make that happen? Um, what that cost would be? I think Key does, I don't, I don't think that's a...
I don't think you can actually, because the definition of a capital project, I mean, you have to use SPOSS funds for a capital project. And the definition of a capital project has a certain amount of life associated with it and so...
There's also, there's also the question of what we're going to do concerning drainage down Jonesboro Street, um, with, with the, uh, one-way pair projects. Now, um, along with the, um, along with the fact that we are definitely, uh, don't have any street escape money being provided by DOT, uh, for Jonesboro Street itself, no street scape capability there. So we either need to look at trying to find some funds, CBDG funds or whatever, um, funding for street scape.
Well, I was...
And that, and that, and that might provide us the land bridge that we need.
I wanna, wanna hear your recommendation because it is a low to moderate income community.
It is. And, and, and community development and public works have, have, have created my challenge as it relates to CBDG money this year, this coming year. Um, and so, yes, uh, wonderful opportunity for CBDG funds to be utilized and I think we should. And I, and I'll double check to see if there's a timeframe on the CBDG as it relates to...
And if you...
Can we remove that improvement a couple of years down the road? I'll investigate that with Chad.
And if you do it on the, if you do it on the north side, which is Marion's Way side, um, you will have less chance of that being taken out. There's a large ditch there and there'd be less chance of that being removed by DOT since most of the work is gonna be to the south side of Jonesboro Street as you go to the switchback. And then they're going to definitely build sidewalk from the railroad track on the north side, um, all the way up past the park and connect it into the existing, uh, sidewalk that's just beyond where our park is. Just before you get to Redwood, um...
We might even be able to pick up some transportation.
Rosewood.
Because it is, um, because the bridge is considered pedestrian transportation.
But you, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna talk to you.
But that might take care of that entire gully there. Plus it will, plus we have Alexander Park that comes right out to it and one of the trailheads is coming right out to it and that could be meshed with that bridge coming across there.
Do we need to take these two items off the bond list tonight?
Yes, I would love for them to make that, that, any recommendations y'all do have.
I'll make a motion if we move IT, IT and cemetery off our bond list.
Do I have a second? I have a motion, uh, and a second to remove, um, IT and...
Cemetery.
And cemetery, uh, off the bonded fund list. Would you, uh, read that back to us?
Madam Mark? The motion is to remove the cemetery item of five hundred thousand dollars and the IT infrastructure of five hundred thousand dollars off of the bonded list, which will reduce the bonded list to six million oh-sixty-two five hundred.
Um, all in favor? All in favor. Thank you. Moving to item number...
We, we, and, and we'll bring this back when we got the permit.
I have that.
Yeah, so we can talk about what we want to do.
On the sixteenth. All right, that'll be good. And then on the, uh, item number eleven, discussion of CBDG funds and the renewal of, with Henry County?
Real quick, um, as you know, we, we've been authorized participant, but we have been a participant per se as a city bringing specific city projects to CBDG over the last three-year funding cycle. Uh, now they're up for renewal of that funding. We have the option to either stay on and, and continue to participate. I think our money is, is gradually increasing, exponentially increasing with gradually. Um, I think we're at somewhere close to eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars in CBDG funds total, um, that's just per citywide and, and we're eligible for that because we've, we've now been classified as a urban county. Um, we're over two hundred thousand people and that's the typical threshold in the metropolitan area that says you can now get funds directly from the Department of Urban...
They, they house it over there. They refer to it as entitlement.
Entitlement, we're now an entitlement community, yes, ma'am. Uh, and so we don't have to go to the Department of Community Affairs for CBDG funds anymore on a competitive basis. Um, that's where we were before, it's communities, we're no longer there. Um, but if we choose to opt out, uh, only means would be to go through the state competitive process with DCA and I'm gonna be honest with you. It is highly competitive, coming from somebody that's written three CBDs in the home. It is very competitive and it takes you, I don't know, to do a lot to get to that point where you're funded, um, and run up there.
Well, we, we, in the past, uh, I have to say this to you, in the past, we have been very successful with it and our, uh, welcome center and all of the paving and the streetscapes around the square and, uh, sidewalks and some stormwater drainage and some other things have, um, occurred because of that. So we've been very, very successful in the past.
And the recent, in the recent past, we have, so I'll go with one of the things I talked to the department heads about it, specifically our community development and public works departments. This year, we're going to need a charge to put some projects before the county for funding as part of SPOSS.
But we don't have any guarantee either from the county that we will get funded.
Well, no, but it's, it's, I would tell you, because we are a participant, there's a very good likelihood that we can do it, much better than if we compete in the DCA. Um, just to be honest with you, um, from somebody that's done that on, in recent history, we've got a far better shot at getting projects. Now, I realize, um, a non-competitive CBDG is five hundred thousand dollars, okay? But it's very competitive. I mean, that's still a lot of money based on what the county has at eight hundred to distribute to us, but I'm gonna tell you that if we get a hundred thousand dollar project or two hundred thousand dollar project out of the eight hundred, it's better than competing and getting zero.
And it's another factor that we need to add into there, is, is five hundred thousand dollars up to single project.
Correct.
And the, the other thing too is if you are funded, then there's a X number, I think it's two years.
Ten years.
Two years before you can even apply again.
So you get two years off, you can...
There's a county out behind that and, and being one of the ones that were able to beat the system, um, in Griffin, uh, Griffin still gets funded to CBDG funds if I'm not mistaken, based on the finding, we actually did some creative things down there as it relates to, and, and Griffin is much more depressed than, than McDonough, so it was easy for us to do that there. Here it's hard. It's a, it's a lot of stuff that you gotta go through, where you put a plan before DCA and DCA basically says, we approve that plan and you can, for three years, you can get funded three years in a row and then you gotta re-up that plan. So we, we did a lot of our groundwork and they, they've got very more poverty issues than we...
Yeah, I think that's important to Frederick for folks here to understand that these, these funds are for depressed areas.
Yes.
Low to moderate income communities.
And, and, and I'll tell you, one of the main some discussion I had with Rodney and, and one of the former community development directors here was that I would have loved for us, before the census came out, to really take advantage of our demographics that was on statistics at the time. And I remember telling these guys, my biggest fear for McDonough is that because McDonough grew so fast, it would skew a lot of the demographics within those different census tracts to the point where, as you see, Hampton is mostly depressed, some of it didn't grow. Um, McDonough didn't, so a lot of Blacksville's demographics was eaten out of their census tract, um, because of the growth around that area and Rastie Lakes and some of the other areas that pulled from that, from that, from them. Um, we would have been able to agree, you could do some things here a couple of years ago, you would have trapped us into that demographic profile for more funding. But be, be said, I didn't, this is the best interest of the city to go ahead and sign on for the next three years. Um, my charge is, as long as you guys keep me here and my charge to these guys is, we're gonna put projects to be funded. They might not get there, but we're gonna put projects. We have been done so in the last three years, that we will, over this next past three years, we can put some projects before the county's funding.
So your recommendations to René?
Yes.
You get a motion for that?
Yes, sir.
Do we need to go forward with that or do we need to wait to the sixteenth and let the others here to participate?
Um, we can wait till the sixteenth, um, if, if, so Jules, I know that there's a, there's a timeline, um, that, that Chad and I have to give back to us. I think it's, in, in the, what she sent us is July, uh...
Because if we could, I think it would be important for them to be able to go on record concerning...
So we should have...
She wanted, yeah, she wants to give back to, uh, three, three. So I think we've got till the end of the month to be able to do so.
So we can put on the sixteenth and hit that?
Should the city elect not to continue its participation in the cooperation agreement administered by the county?
Yes.
If you know, if it's writing by Friday, June twentieth, you have time.
Yeah.
So postponers, we, we could...
So postpone this, we, we could consent this on the sixteenth.
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Item number twelve, amendment to the park usage ordinance regarding rules and regulations for the dog park.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor Proton.
We're waiting till the sixteenth?
Uh, no, ma'am, I think we're ready to take this up tonight. You all will indulge me. Um, briefly, our current, we're getting ready to, um, have a grand opening for a dog park out there at Park. And our current park usage ordinance does not permit unleashed dogs in any park. So we need to amend that obviously if we want to have a dog park. That's what this amendment does. Um, I know you haven't had very much time to look over it, but it's not very long and there, the, the rules are pretty well matched up to what the county asked their dog park. Madam Mayor Proton has worked very long and hard on putting these rules together and has kindly provided me with them. But, um, again, there's not much to it beyond that. So that's, it's in an effort to make sure that we have everything in place so that we can move forward with the grand opening and have everything in place on time. Um, and assuming you've had time to, to explain through them, there's really nothing more to this ordinance than that. So my recommendation would be to withhold it for being this.
I thought it was pretty straightforward. I didn't see anything in there to, you know, you change or dress up, make a motion, we approve.
And in the, oh, I also say the name of my favorite dog citizen, Chloe Assett, would you go right?
We have a, we have a motion in a second. Madam clerk, would you read it backwards?
Um, yes, the motion is to approve the dog park ordinance. All in favor, Madam Mayor Proton?
Oh, God, I was looking at Paul's name thinking how she's gonna be so excited.
Um, we're moving, oh, thank you for that. We're moving forward to, um, twelve A.
That's behind tab number thirteen.
Twelve A, which is approval of the increase of water and sewer rates effective July first, two thousand and fourteen, and authorization for mayor to sign, uh, the resolution.
And, um, well, we've prepared these materials, but I, I don't mind jumping in here. If you don't mind, we sit on your toes, so we'll leave it. But be ready, but, because they may have questions for you. Uh, but just know, everybody's got sleepy eyes, so I will try and make it as fast as we can, which is what I'm good at. Um, basically, uh, several years ago, the city made a policy decision that we would match once a year, um, the rate increases that Henry County Water Authority made so that we would have uniform water sewer rates across the city. Um, that is what this resolution does. Henry County increased their rates, so this, uh, resolution basically is a result of that increase. It's not something the city has decided to do on its own. And it is reflects that automatic basically increase, um, that we're going to expect July one. The new rate schedule is attached as an exhibit to the resolution. It will be posted on the city's website. We posted it at City Hall. And we're gonna run an ad, Janice and the Henry Herald, isn't that the plan? So there will be plenty of notice, uh, to the city's customers that the rate adjustment is coming. Again, this is just a result of that policy decision so that we can have uniform rates across the city. Because some of our city's customers are serviced by Henry County Water Authority while some are serviced by the city. It doesn't make any sense not to have uniform rates. So.
We have some county residents that get city one.
Uh, I don't know that, but I will take your word for it. But again, in an effort to have uniformity of rates, that's what this is all about, so.
We have a few because you can't double that.
So, um, so our recommendation would be for you all to adopt this resolution tonight.
Motion in the second, please.
I'll make a motion when we approve the recommendation by staff to increase the rates, water rates.
A motion in second. Madam clerk, you'll read that back?
E- e- excuse me, I don't get who's seconding.
And that includes, uh, authorization for the mayor to sign the resolution.
The motion is to approve the recommendation by staff to increase the water and sewer rates effective July one, two thousand and fourteen, and authorize the mayor to sign the resolution.
Can I have a vote, please?
All in favor.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor Proton, I have, have a question because I thought in the original ordinance, we voted for an automatic renewal?
We did, but the ordinance requires that, or the, um, requires a resolution for the rate adjustment to be adopted by resolution of the mayor council. And so the new, although the adjustment is automatic based on the actions of the Henry County Water Authority, just by virtue of the way the ordinance is written, you all have to review the, the adjustment and we have to bring it to you and then we're giving public notice to everybody too, so.
Um, everybody ready now? We'll move on to, uh, twelve B then. Approval of contract between the city of McDonough and Llewellyn Construction Company in the amount of five hundred and thirty-five thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and thirty-two cents. And authorization for mayor to sign this contract.
And Madam Mayor Proton, this one is mine also. Steve Roberts is here from Concord, Cleveland. Thanks for being here again tonight. You all remember at our last council meeting, um, you all approved and voted to approve the lowest responsive bidder on this one, that was Llewellyn Construction Company. We have the final construction documents and the construction contract for you tonight. That's what's in the materials. Um, it's got all the required documentation there. So, uh, nothing has changed about it, but in order for you all to, you approved the letting of bid last time. But the way the charter is written, you actually have to have the contract documents in front of you to approve this contract and to have a people on, inviting you on the city. So here it is now for you, the eyes, the T's cost. Um, Mr. Roberts kindly indulged me to make sure that we have everything just the way it should be. So our recommendation would be that you go ahead and vote to approve this tonight pursuant to the action you took last time.
And this is spots three, fine, correct?
This is.
I need a motion.
Sure.
Second, I need a second. I have a motion in second. Um, Madam clerk, if you'll read back the motion, please.
The motion is to approve the contract between the city of McDonough and Llewellyn in the amount of five hundred and thirty-five thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and thirty-two cents. Um, and authorize the mayor to sign the contract and this will be played for spots three months.
Thank you all.
All in favor, Madam Mayor Proton?
Thank you, thank you.
Now, I believe we're caught up. Item number thirteen was removed and we're now at fourteen, the executive session. So anybody who would like to wait for us to return, we're going to exec- I need, um, executive session, please, for litigation OCGA fifteen dash fourteen dash two and real estate OCGA fifty dash fourteen dash three B one. I need a motion.
Some.
Second. I have a motion in the second.
The motion is to approve to go into executive session for litigation, which is OCGA fifty dash fourteen dash two and for real estate, which is OCGA fifty dash fourteen dash three B one.
All in favor?
All in favor, Madam Mayor Proton?
Thank you. And item number fifteen, um, city administrator, uh, any comments?
No, ma'am, just before you get out of here, I think I've talked, we're here too much. No, ma'am.
City attorney?
Well, just a quick three or four or five, I'm kidding.
No, no. City clerk?
Um, yes, I have given y'all your personal financial statement. It is due at the latest in my office Tuesday, July first at five o'clock. If I don't have it by then, you will be fined. It's not, I'm not, I don't do the fines. The State Ethics Commission does the fines. So y'all got, there's no grace period on the personal financial statement. July one, that's it. Um, Steve Egan put, uh, sent us a little email today. It's in the signed with him just to give you an update on where he is on the organizational assessment study. And you've got to, um, decide on a special call meeting for next week for the budget. I don't care, but y'all just tell me so I got, so I can advertise it.
Thursday?
Thursday.
Thursday or Friday?
What's that, five thirty? How many times is it on Thursday?
Uh, five thirty is it?
Five, five thirty.
Could, uh, could you know I'm late? Five thirty, Thursday?
Yes.
Alright, the next one, we'll have our special call meeting, five thirty on Thursday. That's all, there, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, um, alright, council members, uh, Ms. Benson, comments?
Yes, um, real quick, I'm gonna send you guys some information via email tomorrow. But, uh, Adam has already been engaged in this and I'm working with a group and they're trying to bring, um, a Whole Foods to McDonough. And the CEO has expressed some interest in, in wanting to locate here. It started out as being a city of stock bridge initiative, but there were so many folks who responded from McDonough that they're seriously looking at McDonough, so that, that's a great opportunity.
I got a call from VP today.
You did?
He used to have dinner at Seasons one night. So, uh, we'll coordinate. I got his information. I don't know how he got my.
Yeah, I got, I got his information too and I was talking with, with Alton this evening about meeting a season.
I don't know how he got my number.
Must be both on the same, on the same page.
Yeah, I told him, I don't know. He called me out of blue. So, um, like I said, I had no idea.
I wish that we'd go where the public was.
Yeah, I'll be there and get something.
Anyway, I'll keep you engaged now that I know that you got, had some contact as well. Yeah, we started what, uh, what was it?
I, I just got to do what I told Fred earlier. The county agreed or approved their IGA site on dog park registration. So we move forward there and I wanna thank you again for the dog park. We're getting close and I know you've worked hard, you got donations, so thank you. That's it?
Everybody, all, I need a motion to adjourn.